Okay, so I think the microphones are working and everything, you know. Call this meeting of the City Powell River Committee, the whole for Tuesday, December 19th, 2023 to order. Want to recognize that this meeting is taking place on the traditional territory of the Tlaman people who have lived here for thousands of years and are sharing their territory with us tonight. First, we'll go around and ask if anybody has any announcements. Counselor Almeida. Don't want to do that tonight? Okay, we'll skip that and we'll go to adoption of the agenda. Got one addition we'd like to see, and that's an adoption, under the adoption of the agenda. That's a new item, 4.1 correspondence, which is an email received December 14th, 2023 from the Westview Rape Parist Society regarding extreme weather shelter permit and Dr. Verman.
Adoption of the agenda with the addition.
Second, Counselor Almeida, any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda as amended, carried unanimously. Adoption of the minutes of the December 5th, 2023 meeting. What's your pleasure, folks?
Move there. The minutes to be accepted.
Second here. Mr. Mayor seconds it. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried unanimously. Counselor Southcott just asked me to point out that Counselor Elliott will not be with us tonight. Bring this to item number three, delegations. Amira Abdulallah, hope I pronounced your name properly. Come on up to the podium. You've got 10 minutes to make your presentation.
I am translation, my name is Amira Abdalala. I am from Toronto, Cairo, Toronto, Ontario, Cairo, Egypt, and Kisi-Kuina Ojibwe First Nations. And I am indigenous, I am Arab, and I am black. I would like to first situate where we are in relation and proximity to the closest traditional place names. To the north of us, we have Ajumukh or Quet. Sorry, Quet. A village site also known by its non-traditional name, Wellington Beach. To the south of us, we have Hakum, Grief Point. To the west, Agayiksin, Harwood Island, and Thosam, Rebecca Rock. And finally, to the east of us is Duck Lake, where the Ayjusham name is still asleep. We would like to express and share sincere immense gratitude to the stewards of this Ajumukh Kijeh, this beautiful land, Tlaman Kai Muh, who have long cared for and existed in relationship with the soil, the sea, and the sky before our collective colonial settler memory and history. [speaking Palestinian]. Acknowledge the Tlaman people, this is their land. We are here today as a coalition of people to amplify the voices of Palestinian people. Our presentation today has been inspired by the solidarity shown from more than 60 Powell River and Katat region residents. We have been demonstrating outside of Nicholas Simmons' office every Friday at noon for the past six weeks. We are reaching out to our local elected officials to amplify the urgent calls for a permanent ceasefire and end of Israel's illegal occupation of Palestinian land. It has been more than two months since the people of Palestine have been facing the wrath of collective punishment by Israel and its dedicated political supporters. We are sharing in the outcry of all persons, businesses, citizens, and leaders to call for a ceasefire. A humanitarian pause was not enough. A four-day truce was not enough. Israel's violence continued during Black Friday weekend and only escalated afterwards, killing around 1,000 people in a single day. A EuroMed Human Rights Monitor reporting on the genocide said from October 7th to December 11th, over 24,000 people have been killed. This cannot continue. During the speech, we want to acknowledge that over 10,000 children have been killed by military occupation and offensives committing genocide. An article from the United Nations published on November 22nd, 2023 said, "Every 10 minutes that passes, a child living in Gaza dies." As concerned citizens and human beings here today, we cannot be silent while lives are being senselessly lost at an alarming rate. Israeli government and military have taken control of Gaza's food, water, electricity, medical supplies, and movement. This is an apartheid prison violating countless human rights and international law before our eyes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emmy Liu. My pronouns are she/her. Okay. It is not radical to want genocide to end. It is not revolutionary to want Western colonial governments to stop aiding and abetting war crimes. We must continue to take action and ask questions in every facet of our lives. What will it take for Canada to stop funding, arming, and voting for the genocide of the Palestinian people? For 75 years now, Palestinians have been facing disposition and loss of their homelands of international control and Israeli settlers. Every year, Palestinians remember the Nakba, which in 1948 was the ethnic cleansing and almost total destruction of the Palestinian society. Quote, "The roots of the Nakba stem from the emergence of Zionism as a political ideology in late 19th century Eastern Europe. At least 7,500,000 Palestinians from a 1.9 million population were made refugees beyond borders of the state with no legal status. Zionist forces have taken more than 78% of historic Palestine and ethnically cleansed and destroyed about 530 villages, cities, and killed almost 15,000 Palestinians in a series of mass atrocities, including more than 70 massacres. Zionism is a nationalist political movement that thrives off the colonialist ideology and support of other colonial powers. Israel is a Zionist state that thrives off the colonization and genocide of the Palestinian people. On December 12th, during a UN vote demanding for immediate humanitarian ceasefire in Gaza, Canada finally voted in favor for a ceasefire resolution. This comes undoubtedly from the work of citizens tirelessly trying to have their voices heard for weeks upon weeks. While this is the first and crucial step towards it, Palestinians cannot have true peace without the end of the suffocating apartheid state of Israel."
Peace be upon you. My name is Ala and I'm from Syria. And this is the way that we approach people and to greet. The Western media had had a lack of reporting the events in Gaza over many years, and it has contributed to the world's apathy and ignorance of what has been happened to Palestine. This were repeated interviews, photo collages, video testimonies, and countless emotive stories about the ordeals of the Israeli detainees and their worried families. Yet, there was no similar intensity or extent of coverage of the sentiment of the Palestinian detainees and their families, who make up half of the story. Israeli detainees and their families were presented as real people with names, ages, and powerful human emotions gripped by fear and hope, doing everything possible to save their families, members detained in Gaza. We got to know them and feel their pain, which we were largely detained, denied for the Palestinian. British Columbia Human Rights Commissioner said that, and she mentioned that, "Deeply concerned about the rising number of hate incidents and the devastating events in and around the Gaza Strip are causing a surge of de-discrimination and violence toward the Jewish and Muslim people. We condemn all forms of violence, including actions by Israeli government that infringe upon the basic rights of the Palestinian population. Palestine historically and currently is facing attacks justified by the dehumanization, racial superiority, or resource extraction boasted by terrorists and militaries." Thank you.
My name is Rachel Drieger, and my pronouns are she, they. Quoting from Samia Menel, "It may be easier to look at what is happening thousands of miles away and feel disconnected, hopeless, or numb. Genocide is not an attack on population, however, it is an attack on humanity itself. The world's biggest tragedies are made by the hands of powerful people, but powerful people oppressed through the silence of regular people. This colonial violence that we are witnessing from our screens is not an isolated attack on humanity, land, and life. We recognize this as being colonial violence alike to the genocide inflicted by the government of Canada and the colonization of Turtle Island. We look to you as a council of elected leaders to ensure the voices of those most affected by decisions and systemically marginalized are at decision-making tables and conversations. We urge you as elected leaders of a settler city to think critically of what actions you can take to uphold indigenous sovereignty and for ways to care for the land in which benefit everyone here today and the people yet to come."
I don't want to interrupt you, but you're pretty much at the end of your 10 minutes. So, as counsel, accept to allow the delegation to continue until they're finished. Everybody's nodding their heads, so sorry for the interruption.
Thank you so much for letting us continue. My name is Cheyenne Ashen Hopkins. My pronouns are they, she. We come before you today as a coalition of people who will not remain silent as Palestinian people face genocide at the hands of Israel and its supporting settler colonial states on Turtle Island, such as Canada and the US. To quote the Palestinian youth movement, "Silence is not neutral. The refusal to advocate for a ceasefire is not neutral. It is reflective on the priority to protect an ethno-fascist settler colony at the unforgivable cost of genocide." Please, as acting members with power representing the city, join the calls for a ceasefire and an end to the occupation of Palestinian lands. We can follow the precedent of the city of Burnaby, who was the first so-called Canadian city to call for a ceasefire. Mayors from Saskatoon, Edmonton, Hamilton, London, Victoria, and Toronto have followed suit. Alongside them are city council members from Mississauga, Brampton, Vancouver, and more. We ask today that, one, the council and mayor of the city of Powell River join in on the calls of other cities, mayors, and council members to pass a unanimous motion for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Two, use your power as community leaders to ensure an immediate and permanent ceasefire as well as denouncing dehumanization and genocide of Palestinian peoples. Three, we invite all local businesses, organizations, people, and levels of government to publicly support an immediate and permanent ceasefire. We ask that the city of Powell River Council and Katat Regional District make a joint statement denouncing all acts of hate, including Islamophobia, antisemitism, and colonial violence. What is being done to the Palestinian people is undoubtedly genocide and ethnic cleansing. Occupation is violence. The perpetual and collective punishment Palestinian people face violates countless international human rights and are considered war crimes. The so-called Canadian government is complicit in these decades-long occupational violence involved in colonizing Palestine. The only ethical option is to have the so-called Canadian government fulfill its legal obligation to end Israeli apartheid. We must end the genocide of Palestinian peoples and denounce forms of oppression everywhere. Every chewy matters includes Palestine. Never again for anyone includes Palestine. Free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Give council an opportunity to ask any questions. Is it going to go around the table? Just give people an opportunity, if they have one comment or one question, to ask them, and I'll start with Counselor Almeida.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to thank the delegation for coming. We've received all your emails in the past, but I would honestly say this is the best way to address council. So I was happy to see you on the agenda today. Thank you for taking the time and the energy to come forward and bring this cause out in the public as well, as opposed to just our email boxes.
Where Isaacson?
Thank you, Chair. Would you entertain our motion at this time, or are we still in questions?
You might want to wait until everybody's had their chance to make comments.
Thank you. So in terms of comments, also want to thank the delegation and people in the audience for coming tonight. I know I've seen a lot of local people beyond the gatherings that happened on Friday, a lot of people on social media sharing information and concerns and grief about what's going on, especially on Instagram. That's where most of the app that I have seen that. And so I definitely have seen an overwhelming support for some of the issues and actions that you're hoping for, from members of the public. Yeah, and I just share in your grief, share in your hope for justice and safety for all. And I'll stop there for now. Thank you.
There was no.
Thank you for the presentation. This is a complex subject, as I'm sure you appreciate. In order, I can put this into perspective, that Hamas, a Palestine government, received $6 billion from Syria and other Arab countries to allow them to have an attack on Israel, which was a deadly attack and led to many deaths. United Nations and other agencies are looking at prosecuting war crimes because of this. My question is, did your organization take a stance when Hamas attacked Israel?
Come up to the microphone if you want to answer the question.
Thank you for your question. And yeah, sure, of course, we condemn Hamas. And I have a question back to you. When the hostage prisoners exchange happened, we saw Palestinian women and children in exchange, and that those people, the Palestinian people, were there in the prison for decades for no maybe obvious reasons? Do you condemn that? Do you condemn the Israeli government act of taking those people, the Palestinian people, into prison? I condemn Hamas. I'm not 100% with them. And this happened in front of the media, and we didn't see any condemn, didn't see any act or any saying in this regard. So I would love to hear from you if you condemn the Israeli government keeping Palestinian children and women in the prison.
I have no information on which to make a rational response to that. I ask my question because you've asked for this council to do something, putting that into perspective.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. We condemn all kinds of violence, and it didn't start on October 7th. So yeah, thank you so much.
Counselor Southcott.
Thank you, Chair. There's a saying that evil is done while good people stand by. I think I'm paraphrasing it, and do nothing. I was drawn to come back to this community because I was drawn to this community. And this community, how I know it, is a community of people who seek to find solutions together, answers together, seek connection with each other, regardless of our differences or our different backgrounds. I think there's, we have one enemy. This is what I think, and that is division between us. And I don't think there's much time left, really, when you consider the kind of threats that exist, we're surrounded with, not only just caused by, well, war, but our effect on the environment over the past, our mother earth over the past generation, which is becoming very obvious, but war, regardless of who seems to be right, wrong, is the ultimate in evidence, as far as I can see, of divisions between us. And so I feel I need to stand up and do anything that I can do, which means speak or write. May seem not much, but it is what we can do. And that's what I do. It's why I'm sitting here, try to make a difference, try to find connections between us when there is division everywhere. And the more we are seduced into that division by taking either side, the more we support it. That's what I can't support. And I am proud to have a friend who is a Palestinian woman, and she's been part of a group of about a dozen women, women, where are the men in this? For 25, 30 years, half of them are Jewish and half of them are Palestinian, and they work for peace. People need peace so that we can do what we need to do. Thank you for coming.
Counselor Powell. Got around, and I'd just like to take my opportunity to talk about this. I was appalled at the attack on Israel and the taking of hostages in October. It was sad to see that. I thought that bloodshed would follow. It has been painful every day. Watch the news of the number of people that are dying because of these actions, as of the, what the Israel recalls self-defense, what looks to me like genocide. I paid attention to the news yesterday. The estimated number of people that have died in Gaza since October 7th is around 20,000 men, women, and children, more than the entire population. Think about that, more than the entire population of the Katat Regional District. And it pains me incredibly to not be able to do anything about it and look at what I think is our government, our national government's weak and timid opposition to this going on. So I think we need to speak up. We need to say what we can, do what we can, and also, you know, you've come here to ask us to use all our power. Our power is actually puny in getting something done, but I think putting our voices together and standing up is an important thing for us to do because I don't want to be the person that my grandchildren say, "Why didn't you do anything about it, too?" Go around again, anybody want to make a comment? Counselor Isaacson?
Draft motion to offer.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I move that Mayor Wazno, on behalf of council, write a letter to Prime Minister Trudeau, Minister Melanie Jolie, and this is a bit updated from what you have on your page here, NDP leader Jagmeet Singh, Conservative leader Pierre Polievre, and our local MP Rachel Blaney, asking the government of Canada to use its influence to urge all parties for immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, for all hostages to be released, and for unimpeded humanitarian aid to flow into Gaza, and that mayor and council condemns all forms of antisemitism, anti-Palestinian racism, and Islamophobia. And if there's a second, I'll speak more to it.
Counselor Almeida, go ahead, Counselor Isaacson.
Thank you. I appreciate your remarks. Counselor Doubt, to provide a bit of sense of scale, you know, I've shared a few underwhelming comments so far, but I think the first part of the motion is, is actually not particularly radical. Government of Canada has made increasingly similar comments, and I think that a letter would continue to demonstrate the will of people in Canada to use all of their diplomatic opportunities to urge the international community, et cetera, to go in this direction. The second piece kind of builds on to a previous motion of council to talk about an inclusive community. Previously, it was in specific reference to LGBTQ+ community, and so this is speaking to ensuring an inclusive community. I think, I know it can be uncomfortable for some community leaders to speak on issues like this that feel complicated. There's definitely a long history here. The current issue, this current flare-up really started October 7th with the atrocities that Hamas committed on Israeli citizens. And since then, as Counselor Doubt shared, we've just seen an unequivocal bombardment and an attempted wipeout of the Palestinian people. And so this motion is not about figuring out what a peace in the Middle East looks like. That's not our job, but right now, no conversations are possible without these three items, the ceasefire, hostages, and humanitarian aid to flow, because so many of the deaths that are happening right now in Gaza, so many of them are still to do with bombs, but right now, it's even to do with lack of access to basic healthcare needs, water, and food. And so in addition to my own personal letter writing to politicians, I would support council adding our voice to communities like Maple Ridge and Burnaby. Thank you.
The comments from council? Counselor Powell?
Just for clarification, I just want to make sure that motion I voted on is not the one you wrote on this page?
Yeah, the only changes that I made were adding a couple names of who to send the letter to, and so it would also include, oh, sorry, through the chair, NDP leader Jagmeet Singh, Conservative leader Pierre Polievre, and our local MP Rachel Blaney.
There was no.
Thank you. I really like what Counselor Southcott said, and that is, people need peace. Therefore, I'm very supportive of the mayor on behalf of council urging our federal representatives to do all that they can. I just would like to reflect what is perhaps a significant actual difference between Counselor Isaacson and myself. When I received this, I did extensive research, the United Nations agencies, New York Times, and other groups that have pretty good track record. To me, it's clear that what is happening in Palestine is the result of how Hamas had organized their offensive operations in a way which compromised ordinary Palestinian citizens. And so what Israel was doing was that in order to prevent another Hamas attack, have taken initiatives that has resulted, unfortunately, in civilian deaths. Thank you.
Any other hands? So all those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? It's carried unanimously. So thanks for having the courage to come here and standing up. I'm going to suggest we take a two-minute break here so that people who have just so that people who have just gone through a stressful presentation can say goodnight and go home and enjoy your dinner. And so the next item on our agenda then, as it's amended, would be item 4.1, the email from the Westview Rate Bearers Society. So what's your pleasure, counsel? What, you have a motion? Got a motion to receive and file? Have a second here for that motion, Mayor Wazno? Any discussion? All those in favor of receiving and filing? Any opposed? That's carried unanimously. Number five, reports for decision. 5.1 is Business Retention and Expansion Program. CAO, do you want to have any introductory comments?
Through the chair, you have a report before you today seeking your direction on a request from Work BC Powell River to provide a $25,000 contribution to a business retention and expansion project program for 2024. The report before you gives the background to this. This has been in place for several years, being renewed annually. Our understanding is from the previous Scott Randolph, who was the manager of Director's and Property Development, was that that was not put into the budget for 2024. And he was of the perspective from staff's understanding that the work to do this could be done in-house. I have with me Director Jason Gao, who, his team wrote this report. And should you have any questions, he can speak to it. If you'd like more details, I can also have him speak to this as well. Thank you.
Okay, so I'd just like to give anybody on council an opportunity to ask a question before we get into a motion or looking at recommendations. So staff, do counselors have any questions? And there's a, there is room for questions from the audience at the end of the meeting. At the end of the meeting. Counselor Southcott.
Thank you, and thank you for the report. I definitely followed the history of the business expansion retention program which Mr. Randolph oversaw and that we contributed in. And I was happy to do that because of wanting to support local business. I wonder if staff would be so kind as to maybe elaborate a little bit on what is planned? Is it, is it essentially a similar program only in-house? Or is, are there any thoughts, new thoughts, as far as what might be rolled out in, for the similar purposes? Thank you.
Through the chair, thanks for the question. In, in terms of what would be rolled out, that hasn't been considered at this point. I think, you know, if the Work BC program is not, if our city's not partnering with Work BC, I think there's some discussion to understand whether or not there would still be services offered to businesses with Work BC. Alternatively, some of those services could be offered in-house. I think a key statement in the report is if it aligns with council's strategic priorities. That's something that at this point, we're not sure that it would align. But yeah, at this point, we're looking for direction on whether this should be funded or not.
Thank you. If I may add, yeah, just to add, I basically do support the, the recommendation. And, you know, being as we're in a time of belt tightening, and that's my principal reason for that. But I do, as I mentioned, I did very, I have very much appreciated. And I see it as essential that we do anything, everything we can. And I know we have, you know, particularly over the past few years with the patio expansion during, you know, COVID times that were hurting our restaurants and other businesses. So I know we do that and we will continue. So I am looking forward to us continuing. But I do appreciate we're in times of fiscal real tightness, so thank you.
Mayor Wazno.
Is it appropriate to put forward a motion at this point?
You can put forward a motion if you choose.
I move that council direct staff to respectfully decline the request from Work BC Powell River to provide a financial contribution of $25,000 to support the extension of the Business Retention and Expansion Program contract for 2024.
There's a second here for that. Counselor Southcott, any discussion among counselors? Counselor Palm.
Thank you, Chair. Interesting. We know that the previous Business Retention and Expansion Program under Mr. Randolph was well received by the community in the past. He did a good job. Unfortunately, he has left us. And this wasn't an item that Mr. Randolph even spoke at at CM. I believe he did a conference on what Powell River was up to. So in light of where we are financially, I agree with the motion to just postpone and have another sober look at where we are financially. And in the new year, things will become a lot clearer, hopefully, in terms of assessments and various lands in our community. So at that point in time, council could take a second look. If we were to see a proposal which was maybe a little bit more flushed out as to what the $25,000 would go towards during our budget delivery, we could have a second look at it. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Isaacson.
Thank you, Chair. I think I, I support the recommendation or the motion for a couple of reasons. One is I like staff checking in with our strategic plan and not finalized yet, but hopefully will be soon. And so, and so using that to give us direction and not assuming business as usual when we are in tight financial times. Also, I know that, that internal knowledge that city staff can provide if something like this were continue with respect to policies and bylaws and permitting and all of the things that are so internal, you know, jargon to the city. Having that direct connection, I think, could potentially be a benefit. I, I appreciate that Work BC has provided a number of excellent supports and that collaboration has been positive. I think at this time, it makes sense to pause and reassess and, and make sure that the, kind of the non-core work of the city is aligned with, with council's strategic priorities. So I support the motion.
Any other hands up right now? But I'm going to make a couple of comments. So, now I really feel bad about supporting this because it's $25,000 for a program for business retention and expansion. And I think we're going into a tough financial year. The budget deliberations, when we get to them, are going to be long and hard. And I think that we're going to be making recommendations to reduce spending on a number of fronts. One of the things we're trying to solve is the lack of tax revenue from businesses and industries. And, you know, it's almost like cutting off your nose despite your face while we're getting rid of business and retention, business, retention and expansion funds to do something else. And I hear what other counselors are saying that maybe later in the year, when we look at the finances, we'll be able to come up with a real program. And hopefully, we can find a way to do something about business retention and expansion that we, we have the staff to do and that can be effective. But this is a hard one for me to see. And I'm not sure that it's not going to be one of the harder ones we have to deal with. But here we go. Counselor Isaacson.
Yeah, just a question of process. The recommendation and the motion is that council respectfully decline. So just to clarify for us in the audience, this would go to council for the final decision? Or are, are we as a council able to make that decision in the context of committee of the whole?
Through the chair, to Counsel Isaacson, this would be a recommendation that would go through to council. Thank you.
And so in asking that question, I, through the chair, meant to say to the, our guests in the audience that there's an opportunity to share your feedback either through email or Q and A period before council makes our final decision at an upcoming council meeting.
Okay. Any other discussion, council members? All those in favor of referring this to council is what we're really doing? Any opposed? That's carried unanimously. Things to item 5.2, greenhouse gas reduction pathways feasibility study. CAO, you have some comments?
Through the chair, the report you have before you is for two purposes. One, for information, giving you an update on a study that was funded by the Federation of Canadian Municipalities using the Community Buildings Retret Initiative. So to give you the results of that study. And it's on greenhouse gas emissions and looking at different pathways for the city to reduce its corporate greenhouse gas emissions. The second part of the purpose of this report is to get your direction for a staff internal cost benefit analysis using the study and looking at the three recommended pathways and doing a cost benefit analysis of the different options so that we can come back to council to look at any capital projects and recommendations to move forward on the study's recommendations. So just to emphasize, the direction we're looking for is for an integrated staff cross-departmental cost benefit analysis to move forward on some of the recommendations in this report. And I have Director Jason Gao here, who can provide way more detail than I've given you today and answer any questions. Thank you.
Before, before we get into it and ask the question later, I think that the committee of the whole can do all of the things that are on this motion. Is that true or does it need to go to council?
Through the chair, receiving the information, yes, but directing staff resources, I think typically would be done by council because it, it would take away from other things that we do. I'll look to Ms. LaForte and see if I'm maybe incorrect in that from a procedural point of view.
Through the chair, from my understanding, staff can be directed at the committee level. But if you wanted more time, you're certainly welcome to refer to council anyway.
CAO.
Through the chair, I stand corrected.
Okay, so, so committee of the whole can do all the things in the recommendations. And I thought that was the case. And thank you for your help on that. Any comments or questions from Counselor Southcott?
Thank you, Chair. I loved the report and the, the big, the report from the consultant. It really reminded me of a lot of work that's been done over the past years since, actually, I first got involved on the Sustainability Committee before I was on council. With, which was, its mandate was the creation of the ICSP out of which this, this was a stimulus for the original grant application two years ago for this work. So it was really great to see this work come back. I think it's highly, it relates to the letter that we got with all of the points suggesting things that we could do from the last Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Committee as well. It targets big ones in, in that list. And I was delighted to see that we're already in progress on the heat transfer project at the Recreation Complex because I was really looking for an update on that. It is interesting to see as well that it's in midstream and that there certainly are cost considerations we're still facing with that. But it's very big. And the thing I wanted to ask was, and I was also really glad to see carbon budgeting as added into what, how this would roll out. Because that's something that's becoming more and more common in many approaches through municipalities and I believe senior governments as well. I'm not clear on that, but I certainly have been reading about that over the past year or two. So it was good to see that included in this report. The question really is, there wasn't much focus on the cost savings of all this work, which we realized, city realized in big ways with previous work that then also targeted or more primarily targeted carbon emission reduction. But we, we saved all sorts of money. So that is referred to in the report, both reports, but it, it isn't, it isn't featured. And I'm wondering if you can, if you can give us an idea of expectations, even in a qualitative sort of way going forward? Because I totally support this, but I think it's important for people to realize or understand that it's not just carbon. It's, we, it really connects to efficiencies that gives a cost savings. At least that's what I understand. So if you can speak to that place, thank you.
Through the chair to Counselor Southcott. I, I, excuse me, I appreciate your eagerness. I think the report does not get to that place. And that's the information you should be expecting to come back from city staff on a detailed cost benefit analysis. That wasn't part of PRISM's overall scope of the work that they're doing. I think it's going to come down to city staff really looking at our understanding of whether it's implementing new equipment, looking at the operations and how we can manage that as well. So information to come. That's one of the reasons why we're asking for more time. We want to deliver this report to you as quickly as we got it, so you'd have it. I like to think so you can read it over the Christmas break. But it really is going to take an effort between planning, finance, engineering, and, and recreation to provide the information the year after. Counselor Southcott?
Mayor Wazno.
I think staff's done an excellent job of providing background information. And I would move the motion that council receive for information only. The grant funded 2023 November 6th, GHG Emissions Reduction Pathways Feasibility Study paired by PRISM Engineering and that council direct staff to prepare a detailed cost benefit analysis for the three recommended pathways associated with implementing the GHG Emissions Reductions Pathways Feasibility Study.
Connected by Counselor Southcott. Mayor, do you want to say anything? And then I have Counselor Isaacson on the left.
Thank you. I think this would be an excellent opportunity for the public to get a good understanding of what the impact, the positive impact would be on Powell River. And I expect that one of the key questions that they're going to have, what is the cost and what is the benefit? So I think this would prepare us very well in order to talk to the public.
Counselor Isaacson.
Thank you, Chair. Through the chair, one question about use of staff time. So there's, there's three pathways that are suggested. And two and three are quite similar, but three just kind of spaces things out a little bit better. I'm wondering, would it save staff time remarkably if we just focused, for example, on one and three? Or does it not really make that much of a difference if all three are compared?
Through the chair, I appreciate the question. I think there's value in at least looking at one and three for sure. I know that staff were interested in, in pathway three as a, as a starting place, but I think one and three, as you point out, have some, some substantial difference. Especially in terms of timeline and when we reach those, those FCM targets. I think it would be helpful. But I also wouldn't want council to struggle with making a decision on pathways two and three at this point. I don't know that it's a huge amount more time.
Thank you.
Two cents worth in. I like seeing a longer list of options. But you know, we're talking about a report to go forward with, so the more options we have, I think the better we are. Off we are as council, so. Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried unanimously. Been a fair bit of that tonight. Five point three, digital on demand transit service, Zanga bus pilot, CAO.
Through the chair to council, the report you have before you is about the Zanga bus pilot project. Uh, it gives details around the history of the Zanga bus, funding. Uh, why it's come before you today is because we need council direction on whether we fund it or not. Given that we do not have funding into twenty twenty-four for it. I have Cam Reed, our manager of transportation here, who can answer in more depth. But the report gives you a series of options and staff have not made a recommendation, but given you the implications. Uh, that we could think of from your perspective, you may have others on each of the options. So we've also tried to give you a high level analysis of the usage of the Zanga bus versus other forms of transportation. And with that, I'll pause and see if you would like more details from Mr. Reed. Thank you.
I just have a, another chairperson question for you here. There's uh, at the bottom of the report, the pages, page five and six. I see three options. I think. For council to choose from. And I think what we're looking for tonight probably then would be a reference to council. And I'm suggesting that that's what this body should be doing, picking something to refer to council. And by the time sensitivity, I think that would have to happen on Thursday night. Am I right about that?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay, thanks. Just wanted to clarify that before we get going, so. Council, Councillor Alameda.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind, uh, to staff. Um. As I was reading this, I guess a few thoughts kind of rolled around my head as to how we could, you know, I'm getting known for thinking outside the box. So that's what I started doing was thinking outside the box. Uh, first question I have, and I've uh, come back to the other ones afterwards. Um. I know we have a, a lease on two vehicles for the Zanga bus and we're only operating one right now. I was curious, I guess, um, if there is the possibility of dropping the lease on one of them. Uh, or if there's a penalty involved in that, um, and what the impact would be if we only had the one vehicle in, in circulation.
Chair, thank you for your question. Um, yes, we would be able to drop a lease. Um, and only use one vehicle. The, the downside is contingency. The vehicle goes down. We have the same thing through the rest of our transit system. It's something we struggled with. Rolling out the whole Zanga thing was just having drivers consistently. So my one concern is if we're, we don't have a backup bus, we can't operate it. So yeah, we're trying to keep this, once we're offering the service, we're keeping it open and available to people. So, but we could drop the lease, yes.
Do you know, uh, through the chair, do you know what approximately that would be in terms of savings if we did that?
Yeah, I think we would have to get back to you on that. I would.
Follow up if I might, Chair?
One, one chance.
Okay.
They cut you off.
Yeah, no problem. Well, the, the, the last part that came to mind was as I was reading this and it was good to see the numbers in terms of the average cost per ride. Our um, handy dart service, uh, which is obviously very beneficial to the community. Has, the, the thought that came to mind was it has some similarities to the Zanga bus in terms that it's somewhat on demand, though not by an app. Um, both the, we have a Zanga that services um, wheelchairs. And we have a handy dart that obviously is designed for servicing wheelchairs. And their service hours are somewhat overlapping, but somewhat different from each other as well. So the thought that came to mind was, is there a has there ever been any thought to merging or, or having some sort of hybrid Zanga handy dart service that could do both? Because I imagine there are times in the day where the Zanga bus is not as busy. There's times in the day that maybe the handy dart is not as busy. And I was just wondering if any thought had been put forth to see, is there a way to keep both services in some sort of hybrid capacity?
Through the chair, I, I have to stress that Zanga is not fully accessible right now. Um, handy dart is a, a very different animal. It's strictly for people with, with disabilities. People who can't access conventional transit. I think the original concept for Zanga was to have it fully accessible. Selection of vehicles made it so that's not the case. We, we speak to it in the report. As soon as you put a wheelchair or, or onto the Zanga bus, other ambulatory passengers can't use it. It just kind of basically undoes everything that Zanga is supposed to do. So they are two very different systems. And hence the cost for handy dart is so much more uh, per ride. So I it's possible that, I mean, if Zanga was to carry on and we got an appropriate vehicle, maybe there'd be a uh, a bit of a way of, of having them work together. I'll also say that BC Transit is exploring right now an on demand. Um, aspect for handy dart, just to make it so it's not, you know, the twenty-four hours ahead of time, having to call in. So make it much more app driven. Um, I think you're going to see a lot more of that coming as well.
Uh, through the chair, just to answer your question, councillor Almeida, um, the rough estimate of the cost of the lease would be about twenty-five thousand dollars for that bus. So instead of a loss of two hundred and thirteen thousand, it would be a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. It would, uh, it would push the need to dip into property taxes into uh, the year twenty twenty-seven. It, um, and that, yeah, just to answer your question from earlier.
Councillor Southcon.
Thank you, Chair. I read the report carefully, um, looking for information because a lot of anecdotal information has come my direction from people who use the Zanga bus and, and others who know those people who use the Zanga bus. Um. And the kind of information that I was looking for was what people are actually using the Zanga bus for, because the anecdotal information tends to suggest that it's the kind of uh, transportation like to work, taking kids to school. Uh, or to preschool, not school, uh, but taking kids to places. Um, uh, appointments, the same thing that people would use if they had a car. But this obviously is one way that people can avoid using a car, but I'm not sure how significant that is in the overall numbers. I suspect it is. But the data available doesn't um. Doesn't um, um, eliminate my uncertainty. So I'm wondering if uh, it would be feasible to do a survey and to find out more. I'm just trying to figure out how it, I'm getting the impression and people are lobbying, you know, that this is essential, don't get rid of it. But I really want some uh, quantitative information or quantitative data to back that up. I suspect it's true.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair. I, I will reference the, on page two, we have the, the heat maps for pickup and drop off. There is a little bit of a formatting issue, I think, as that was uploaded for publication. Um, the one on the left is actually the pickup heat map. The one on the right is the drop off. Now, we make note that we're not going too granular with this because you could pretty much pinpoint where people live and, and really see specifically almost, you know, user movement. We didn't want to do that. I will say that the two are very similar. Um, so people are using it obviously for, not obviously, an awful lot of going to the mall. Coming from the mall, um, towards the complex, towards quality foods, that area. Um. Difficult though to actually sort of ascertain, hey, how much are people using it for going to schools? I will say that there's one spot, it's, it's, it looks very significant, like a lot of use, it's actually very specific use by very few people. Going to work, coming from work. Um, so it can be a little bit misrepresented.
I got a long list, so you know, one more question. I gave Earl one, you should get one too.
So another concern that, thank you, Chair, uh, is GHG uh, impact. Um, I found it interesting. It's not exactly pertinent to this, it's more pertinent to my last question. But there, we got kudos from the regional medical health officer during a Vancouver coastal engagement session that a number of us attended for having um, app driven transit as being really progressive from a looking after, you're from a community health standpoint. But another um, question is in the overall um, um, intention to reduce carbon footprint of our entire community, transit is obviously, transit is there is data that shows that transit is really contributes to that in a big way. And this is another question I have specifically for the Zanga bus, how much impact? I don't think that can be answered by data that we have, but do you have, or is it another basically a qualitative? Answer.
Through the chair, I don't have that specifically. Um, it's possible through our sustainability planner. You know, we, we would have had that information. Personally, uh, to me, any transit is a benefit. And again, I'm, I'm going slightly on the limits, it's my opinion. Getting people out of, out of their own vehicles and onto any form of public transportation is going to be a benefit.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Isaacs.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, through the chair, I, I want some clarity around, um, if I could, for our CFO, Ms. Dunston. On uh, like amending the financial plan, et cetera. And so I see reference that um, to include any of the Zanga bus in twenty twenty-four would would mean an amendment to the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven financial plan. And then when councillor Almeida talked about leases, you mentioned that tax, like it wouldn't impact taxes until twenty twenty-seven. So can you clarify, um, like when I, when I saw the draft one of the financial plan at a previous um, meeting recently, and we'll be discussing in the new year. Um, one of the potential cuts was Zanga bus. And so the inference is that it's in there and it could be cut. And so can you talk more about the timing of when the financial implications would be of all these options?
Thank you. Yes, through the chair. The implication for the twenty twenty-three budget, uh, during budget deliberations last year for the twenty twenty-three financial plan. Um, the Zanga bus was uh, voted in favor of keeping it for twenty twenty-three, but not further. And that decision was based on the fact that a hundred thousand dollar grant came in at the last minute. Um, and so direction from council is just to put in the budget for twenty twenty-three. Um, and so as we approach twenty twenty-four. Um, it's not currently in that budget. When staff were contemplating how to bring forward the twenty twenty-four or five year financial plan. Yeah, it was difficult, I think, without the, the strategic plan being fully finalized for staff to know whether it would be better to not include the Zanga bus in twenty twenty-four or to include it. But then list it as an optional service as a service cut. And staff uh, went on their gut instinct and decided it would be better to include it in the twenty twenty-four or five year draft financial plan. And then highlight it as a potential cut so that it would be a conscious decision by council. Um, thereby giving council every year the ability to revisit the decision of continuing the service or not. I'm just based on, you know, what we've seen around a lot of discussion around this topic. So, um, I know it, it it is slightly confusing. So thank you for answering the question and I hope I added clarity and not confusion to that.
Councillor Palm.
Chair, um, we appreciate uh, the comments that were just made by our CFO and staff being prudent in terms of where we are financially in our, at this present time and begging this as a potential cut. Um, to me, it comes down simply to a, a cost factor. Consider, um, it costs us over two hundred thousand to operate the Zanga bus. Uh, that's uh, what I would consider a luxury. Um, something that's mandatory for our citizens, especially in late that uh, we are going to spend more money in two twenty-five to upgrade our current on-demand service, not on-demand, national service. Um, so that's a, a wise decision council has already made. So when this comes to council, I'll strongly be supporting option one, which is the Zanga bus. I would even take it one step further. Instead of keeping both of those vehicles in mothballs, we sell one to perhaps Community Forest. Who can then benefit one of our nonprofit agencies to help out on our transportation front. Uh, and whatever aspect that may be. So I'll be like, supporting option one forward basis. Thank you.
There was no.
Thank you, Chair. When I looked at the numbers, the ones that uh, struck out at me was that there's twenty-two regular users. Which means roughly the city is paying almost ten thousand dollars to accommodate the twenty-two regular users. Um, I've also looked at the other numbers in the report. And simply cannot see any cost benefit analysis that would support continuing funding. It's noted that Kelona and the EC government are looking at a trial. And I think what would be good was to watch that and be prepared to submit a grant. If the numbers that we see would justify that. But at the moment, I think that there's significant, more important things that we could do with two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Thank you.
But he said, uh, they're kick at the cat and I'm just, I'd like to be a first time speaker before we get to councillor Isaacs. Well, I wanna, I don't want to stretch this out too long, but I want to talk about my perspective on the history and I've read the report. It's got the history pretty well defined there. When we started the Zanga bus and I was at the table when we started the Zanga bus, it was a pretty exciting idea of putting together with a technology company a six month trial of on-demand transit. The goal was it would provide on-demand transit to the entire city. It would be a good practice and we would convince BC Transit that they should come to the aid of the city and provide this for everybody. Uh, we, that was COVID times. Things were, were hard to get moving and we had to extend that trial before it had really gotten to start. And the discussion again came up about where it would be, uh, who would be covered. And it was going to be a citywide service and it was going to provide on-demand transit service for a period of time. It'd be great. As we went through that year, that didn't happen. Because it became obvious that there were, the bus couldn't cover on-demand transit for the entire city without having more funding and more drivers. Next item we got was we need to hire, we need to buy another bus. Because that will provide more consistent service throughout the entire community. From the beginning till today, my part of the community in Wildwood cannot take advantage of the wonderful service of the Zanga bus. It doesn't go there. Doesn't come to my house, doesn't come to anybody's house in Wildwood and doesn't come very many places in Townsite as far as I'm aware of. We kept it, we kept the second bus after deciding to fund the second bus. To provide as the, as staff has set, to provide a contin- consistent, consistent service. So that when people called for the Zanga bus, it would come. I did read the report and I read the part, the detailed part, that there is a wheelchair lift. And if you have a wheelchair, you can get on the Zanga bus, but nobody else can. So it, it's a one-ride system and, you know, the I wish the design of the bus had been better, but it is what it is. It is what you can get. Uh, but you know, not ideal if you're trying Uh, but you know, not ideal if you're trying to go, for example. Go from the mall to Wildwood, pick up three people over on Wildwood or maybe four, pick up somebody in Townsite and come back and. Increase the ridership, save all that greenhouse gas and do all that. That's not the service we have. Last year it was extended. We looked at the, I think it was two, two hundred and a few dollars. Two hundred and a few thousand dollars last year to extend the service and originally council has said we're not going to do it unless we get money from B C Transit. Unfortunately, B C Transit actually did come up with the money. It surprised the heck out of me. You come up with a hundred thousand dollars, which made it cheaper. We want to continue on demand transit, the Zanga bus trial, the way it is now. It's not going to cost the same amount in two thousand and twenty four as it cost in two thousand and twenty three. It's going to cost a hundred thousand dollars more. It's not going to provide more service. It's not going to be part of a trial with B C Transit. So I think that we should discontinue this. I like that motion. I don't, I don't like the idea of having segregated services for one area of town and not another. I'd like waiting for B C Transit to decide what kind of on demand transit they're going to have. In Kelona, it's a totally different model. Your on demand transit is not. Plan to focus on the the dense urban area. The on demand transit is meant to be to replace in Kelona. Long routes in the rural areas. And reduce the service basically from large buses going on a long route to on demand transit. So it's going to learn something very different. And what we're doing here. So basically this is adding another hundred thousand dollars to what the taxpayer would pay if we just continue it. And if we don't do it, it's going to save the taxpayers two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And when we get to talking about the budget, that's going to be really important to people. So I am in favor of option number one. Sorry for the long explanation. Counselor Isaacson.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'm going to make a motion. I'd love to be able, have the opportunity to discuss it if there's a second or um, I move that. Counsel amend the two thousand and twenty three. It's kind of like number two with a bit of a change. Um, I recommend that counsel amend the two thousand and twenty three five year financial plan to fund Zanga bus operation until March thirty first, two thousand and twenty four. Include Zanga bus operations in upcoming budget deliberation meetings and begin public notification of the possible upcoming end of service.
Second.
Yeah.
And you're in, what you're really moving is to refer that to the Thursday council meeting.
Yes, so it would be referred to Thursday. Um, so my my rationale for this, uh, again anecdotal evidence, I don't have more. Uh, reliable data. Is um, some of the people who rely on Zanga bus are some of the most vulnerable folks in our community for whom. Actual transit is that the existing transit routes are not an option. And I would like to give them a bit of a grace period to let them know that this could be cut. Um, so that they are able to rearrange their childcare, work uh, or healthcare needs schedules. Um, rather than it being a firm cut at at December thirty first. Um, as Counselor um, South caught alluded to, sometimes it's like. You know, a single parent dropping off kids at daycare and then going to work or other. Other coordination that that uh, the regular transit system. When there is an hour gap often between routes is um, is just not possible. So this provides them a little bit of grace. The suggestion from staff is to take money from climate action reserve funds. So there would be no tax uh, implications in this upcoming year. Um, and also it allows council to consider that we are getting an increase in transit funding in two thousand and twenty five. Um, and this gets us closer to that increase, but we just don't have it in two thousand and twenty four. So I feel like this is a balance. It provides the opportunity. To give a grace period for people to make alternative arrangements rather than giving them the eleven, twelve days uh, left. And um, and doesn't uh, impact uh, taxes because we have uh, reserve funds available for this. In the climate action reserve funds and um, allows us to can, to still can. Consider it in upcoming budget deliberation meetings and council may choose not to go forward with it and that's, that's going to be council's prerogative. But uh, this, I I feel like this motion is a, is a bit of a, a happy medium. Um, and uh, appreciate council's consideration for it.
Counselor Earl Medja.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I uh. I'm in favor of the motion as it stands right now. Um, wanted to clarify a couple of things that have been mentioned and then also have a question to staff at the end. Um, with reference to. How the Zanga bus was funded last year and the CFO can correct me if I'm wrong, but. I was sitting in the gallery last summer when it came up for discussion. If I remember correctly. Um, after some deliberation last year, council actually voted on the entire two hundred thousand dollar budget. Um, after B C Transit had said, no, we're not going to fund you. And it was by the good grace of actually not the B C Transit, but I believe by the provincial government. That actually funded um, generously gave us a hundred thousand dollars. And I remember former mayor Formosa. Uh, raving about that for several minutes at a council meeting um, a couple of times. Um, so it was the previous council that actually took the chance. On on keeping the Zanga bus and. And and then we were graciously given some funding to cover that support. Um, I also want to add that about three months ago, while we were at U B C M. We were recognized as a city and I believe it was in the paper. We had a photo taken for uh, an award for the Zanga bus. And as I sit here now and and I and I struggle with the the budgetary challenges we have, it feels like winning a sports championship and then folding your team. Uh, if we were to shut the entire service down as we've got something unique that no one else has. Um, that could grow into something even better and we're, we're faced with the dilemma of do we keep it or do we not? Um, I I do uh, relate to Counselor Dell's concerns in terms of other communities outside of uh, Westview getting. Access to to the Zanga bus. I'd like to figure out how we can make that work. Um, so I'm I'm torn that way. Uh, my one question to staff before we vote on this is um, I myself and my wife and and family have used the Zanga bus. Um, and the option in the app is there to buy a um, a bundle of tickets. Uh, in advance so that you you get some extra savings. I'm curious if uh, we put this through and there's the potential of the service ending in three months. Um, is there going to be an option for those that might already be sitting on twenty passes and might not use it on a regular basis to be able to. Have those um, funds recouped or transferred to some other form of transit.
Through the Chair, uh, I don't believe we know the answer to that, so we would have to report back on that.
Counselor Southcott.
Feels like we're starting to debate this, but um. At the risk of that, um, I just want to put forward my, an observation and a concern. I have noted that the number of uh, course, the correspondents that we receive. Uh, urging us to. Abandon the program. I'm ninety five, ninety nine percent sure that all that correspondence comes from people who are in. My income class and who have other options and pretty much all have their own cars. So it doesn't impact. It doesn't impact us, uh, whether we get rid of the Zanga bus or not. Who it does impact are not the people who are paying the majority of taxes. In this community, I think, but that's one of the things that I'm not a hundred percent sure of, but by anecdotal evidence, I'm pretty confident that's the case. So what I've become aware of is what I see as a downward pressure uh, in society. Um, even my son and his generation are are, you know, throwing up their hands at. Not being able to even afford a mortgage for a house. Some of those people are struggling to afford vehicles. I think that's more and more the case. I did note on the numbers in this report that there was an interesting um, number of people, seniors. Who are using this as well. I have received. Concerns from seniors that the taxi service doesn't work at night. Well, this doesn't, it only works into the evening, I think, doesn't it? But. Yeah, so it's limited as well. So there are, there are transportation challenges. But it's not the people who can afford to own a car that have those transportation challenges or who are capable of driving, generally speaking. So. In this downward pressure, what happens is you end up with something else we've got now, and that is a hundred and twenty six homeless people, according to the homeless count that was done in April. We also have real problems in with the shelter. This is the bottom end of the downward pressure. Uh, I'm really, I'm very loathe to um, discontinue something that looks after. People who are at risk of being pushed right down, you know, down the slope. Um, or al- allowing that downward pressure, facilitating that downward pressure to be, to be increased. So I'm, I wish we had more data. In terms of how much people actually do depend on this, but I'm, I'm just. Wanted to state my concern uh, for abandoning this and I do, we've, we've put ourselves in a position. B C Transit in their very slow planning will not support us. We really were, have been counting on that. Even Ministry of Transport liked what we did and gave us that money last year. And now we're kind of on the hook and we don't even have any um, assurance as far as I know, thanks to Rob Ringman's last. Uh, visit here uh, that in two thousand and twenty four or two thousand and twenty five, we're likely to um, be included in their. Pilot as far as I know. Is that true? That's a question for staff and that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Through the Chair, uh, yeah, I don't think there's a guarantee um, as far as on demand with B C Transit. They are very much are aware of how interested this, how much this community wants on demand transit. Um, they're aware of the W S P um, report that was done back in two thousand and twenty two. It said, hey, build a more robust conventional system and then use an on demand component. In in the Westview area, basically kind of what we're doing now, but one that actually ties in with the conventional bus system to make it more effective. So they very much know that we want it. I will say I'm not sure about their timeline as far as, you know, they're just going really into trial in in Kelona, you know, two thousand and twenty four. So we'll see. They they do move slowly.
There was no.
Thank you, Chair. For four years I was on the board of the Senior Center in Powell River. And we had a number of opportunities. Where the question of transportation of our members came up. And we looked at this and we organized a ride program. And we encouraged uh, individuals that were in need to talk with their family, talk with their neighbors. Again, because this is very much a neighborhood organization. Uh, we're not living in Vancouver. We're not living in Surrey. We're living in Powell River. Where there's been a long tradition of volunteerism and helping people out. And so when I looked at the financial consequences of this motion, essentially it's spending fifty two thousand dollars. Which may alleviate concerns of three or five people. Who for whatever reason do not have a network of family or friends or other options. And I also appreciated uh. Mister Reed's comment about the mapping. And when I looked at the mapping, it seems to be significant opportunities for users to use public transport. To go to Town Center or other places. So in a nutshell, I will not support this motion.
See Counselor Isaacson on the list for a second time, but I haven't spoken yet, so don't see any other hands up, so. I just want to comment that uh. It's an interesting service. It's it's a. Glitzy service. It's nice, you know, it's good to talk about it. U B C M and say here, hey, here's what we're doing, but it has a price. If we're gonna expand that to the entire community, which I think we should do if we're going to keep the service. Just on the ballpark, I would say we should double the cost of the service so we can provide a good service. On demand to Cranberry, Wildwood and and Townsite and do a good job of that. That would be, that would be a headline at next year's U B C M convention. And they would say what a great place to live this, this is and anybody who wants it, including me. And my family members who, you know, could would uh, many times enjoy. Having on demand transit as opposed to having to use the car to go here and there. Handicapped access would be great. Love to have it. It just would cost a little bit of money. And that's the issue that we're talking about today. Every service that the city provides costs money. The crunch is coming pretty soon. It's going to be budget time. We're going to have to decide what we spend our money on. Everything we decide not to spend money on will affect some people in the community somehow. When I look at the Zanga bus service, it's limited access to people. It's doubling the cost to the taxpayer this year. I think that's something that we could dispense with, with minimal harm compared to the other things. That we're going to spend money on doing or not. So I'm opposed to this motion. I think we should, we should deal with it. We should make a decision on the, on this service. As soon as we can and get on with the rest of the stuff. We're going to have to decide on our budget process. So Counselor Isaacson, you're next.
Yeah, thank you. My one final comment I forgot to share in the original, in in my rationale for proposing this slightly different motion to extend it to March thirty first is. Um, when people have come to me to ask me about like, oh, the potential cuts to the budget and what things are you considering cutting? I've been telling them, we're having budget deliberations in January and so when you see the full suite of opportunities. Feel free to write to council and let us know what services are important to you, et cetera. And so in making this decision now, I I feel like the public who is expecting budget deliberations in January doesn't, has not had an opportunity to. Um, to have this conversation and I, and I know based on. You know, conversations at this council that it is very possible that the Zanga bus could be canceled. But I suspect that most of the users of Zanga bus are not those that are uh, reading the paper or attending council meetings. And I think a little bit of notification um, for them to plan alternatives is the ethical thing to do. And so that's why. I appeal to council to support this motion, not to fund Zanga bus into perpetuity, but to give that grace period for people who. Are the most vulnerable, who for whatever reason don't have friends and family that they can rely on. Um, and are dealing with complicated lives and have come to depend on on the Zanga bus. So a little bit of grace period. Um, no tax implications. It does draw from the reserve fund, which abs, which it it's money. It's not like money from nowhere. It's actual money. Um, but just provides that transition period and letting people know about the possible ending of a service that they've come to rely on.
Counselor Palm.
Sorry, uh, Chair, I just had to to have one more comment on the topic and that is um. Put it in perspective for council. And this comes forward and after, in the new year or this Thursday, I'm not sure when. One thing to keep in mind is earlier this evening, we just turned down a request for twenty five thousand to help support retention of business in our community. And I am fully aware that over the last few months, I have heard several businesses that are. Going to be or have already closed their door. So we not supporting business, going to be. Uh, spending another fifty two thousand on Zanga butts for three months. It just does not add up. Uh, dollars and cents wise, as far as the health of our community is concerned. I just want you to think about that prior when this comes back because I'll be. Using that argument once again when it does come here.
Earl Medja.
Um. Counselor Southcott made a statement earlier that uh. Many of the people sitting at this table aren't, are making a decision on the service they probably never used. I might be the only one here. And and Counselor Isaacson that have actually used the service. Um, and many at this table might not need to use the service. Um, I have a family of five that we, we live on one car. I took the bus today. And at times I take the bus, at times I take the Zanga, at times I walk, at times I take the bike. Depending on the weather of the day and what my energy is like. depending on the weather of the day and what my energy is like. So I feel, you know, to, to Counselor Isaacson, uh, based on conversation, it looks like we're gonna be split on this one too. And Counselor Elliott, I know, would probably be in favor of this based on her previous comments. Um, so I'm gonna urge our, um, counselors who are not in favor right now. As per Counselor Isaacson's, uh, point, this is a, a short-term solution. It is not impacting tax dollars, the reserve funds from the climate reserve that was generated as a result of the Zanga bus. We might come back to this in a couple of months and it, it might be that this is the end. But the other thought that came to mind during these deliberations was we, we received a hundred thousand from the B C government last year without asking for it. What would happen if we actually did ask for it? Okay, maybe we asked for it last year, maybe we should ask for it again. There was no promise of it continuing last year. Um, and, but, you, you know, I, I've learned in life, you get nothing if you don't ask for it. And so if we, uh, can get three more months out of here, we've, you know, we can get, uh, uh, the mayor to sign off a letter, send it over to the Ministry of Transport or whoever gave us the money last year. Maybe we get a no. And if we get that no in a couple of months, we come back to this and we decide to, to put it, to put an end to it. But if we give it this, this three-month window, we give an opportunity for those that, uh, ride it, to use their rides, to provide some extra feedback. We give us as a community the chance to find alternate ways to maybe make this work. Um, and this has been a, a bit of a, you know, transit gamble in a way, trying to see if B C Transit would get on board and support us a little bit more. The Ministry of Transport gave us a little bit of a, a buffer last year. Maybe they'll give us that buffer again this year. And, and ma- maybe it's a lost cause, maybe B C Transit will never come on board. But, you know, I, I'd hate to, you know, put the time and energy that we have into this. And I understand there's a cost in, involved, but, uh, I feel like we haven't given it our best effort yet. And there's, there's still some more to give if we can find a way to make it work.
So what, on the table right now is Counselor Isaacson's slightly amended motion to refer it to council on Thursday. So C A O, you had your hand up.
Through the chair, I'd like to ask our manager of transportation to respond in part to the comments about requesting B C Transit funding. You.
Thank you through, through the chair. Uh, so the funding agreement did state explicitly, uh, this funding is one-time and not intended as ongoing annual operational support. I'm not saying that council couldn't approach them, but, uh, that was our take. It was made very clear last year.
So I'm gonna call the questions. So all those in favor of Counselor Isaacson's motion? Free in favor? All those opposed? I'm opposed as well, and I'm kind of stuck right now as far as where we go. Because we're not supposed to be in a tie situation, counsel. So, and, uh, Counselor Southcott is telling me that he believes that in the situation where a council has a tie, that the motion fails. I would, I would, from my Roberts rules of order, I would say that's probably true. Because generally what you do is you leave the status quo in place, which would mean you don't go with a motion which changes the status quo. Um, corporate officer, am I right in that? And Counselor Southcott, right?
You're correct, Chair, the motion's defeated.
Okay, so that motion fails. And I'm gonna just point out right now that it's five oh three. This meeting started at three-thirty. Counselors have been here since one-thirty. And I would like to take a ten-minute break and just have, uh, a little, little comfort break and come back.
Just a clarification in the public, this item will come back Thursday night.
This item will be back on the chair, on the table when we sit down. Because we, we have had a motion that failed and it's now o- open to alternative motions.
My question is, do we need an emotion to take it forward Thursday night? Or can we deal with it Thursday night?
Right now, there is no motion to take forward on Thursday night. So when we come back, I am expecting, if we can take a break, that when we come back, somebody on council will make a motion that we can take forward to council that hopefully will pass and then it can be debated by council. So we're gonna take a ten-minute break.
It's disappointing. More clarity. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
It'll get republished on the data, bye.
I feel.
Oh, yeah, we almost have one. Okay, right. Option one.
Well, see, I also make the motion. Here it goes.
And the mayor might be making it.
I thought he might be too. Okay. Taking advantage of some charcuterie?
Yeah. Very good.
Not poke myself in the eye. Device is offline.
The split screen's not working for me. Is anybody else having that problem?
Pardon me?
The split screen version of the agenda does not work for me.
I don't, uh, mine is working.
Keeps popping me, like, going fully into the document and I.
I don't have one of those cheap, you know, city computers. I got my own, my own.
Depends on, depends on which way you access, you know. I just access through the website.
Yeah, that's where I am.
The city website, through the, uh, whatever it's called.
Who killed the?
Agenda notes.
Pardon?
Agenda notes is, I just click on my agenda notes thing and it, it works here. Doesn't work at the regional district, but it works here. The regional district one, they change it more often, so it's more difficult for it to keep up. Anyway, I think we're pretty close to that time, aren't we? Hey, folks, just about time to, uh, adjourn recess. So here we are, back again under item five dot three, digital on-demand transportation service. I see your hand up, Mayor Wasno.
I move the motion to direct staff to follow the two thousand and twenty-three five-year financial plan bylaw, two seven one five, two thousand and twenty-three, and discontinue Zanga bus operations on December the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, and to provide public notification.
And that's a referral to council on Thursday night to make that decision. So is there a second year for that motion? Counselor Palm, any discussion? Opinions? All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna have to at some point deal with this motion. I see the C A O has some input.
Through the chair, if, if, uh, it keeps tying, the implications will be the status quo, which means that Zanga bus, your recommendation to council is that that Zanga bus be discontinued, but you will get another opportunity at council as well. Thank you.
Can you repeat that, please?
The chair explaining to council that should you continue to tie, the motions will fail, and the recommendation to council will be essentially the status quo. Uh, however, when you are at council, you have the opportunity to bring forward motions again. Thank you.
Perhaps, perhaps a simple option might be a motion to refer this report to council on Thursday. Have unanimous approval for that? Thank you. That's, that's the solution we will come to and same time, same station, different day. See you Thursday. Okay, five dot four. Twenty twenty-four meeting schedule. Deputy corporate officer, do you have C A O? Do you wanna?
Through the chair, uh, Ms. LaForte has brought forward a report. Uh, you are required, based on your procedures by law, by January fifth to adopt a new schedule for twenty twenty-four. So you have that attached to the report, and the report explains how the schedule has come about. And Ms. LaForte is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Sister Isaacson.
Uh, just a few questions. When I look at the meetings, uh, schedule in the appendix, um, if we are the first and third Mondays, would there not be a regular council meeting on February first? Was that intentionally omitted because of finance meetings, or was that an oversight? There is a committee of the whole that we can.
Through the chair, um, correct, there should have been the one on February first as well.
And the second question, if I can, Chair, comment, um, uh, A B I C C is April first through third, and I notice. What? Okay, never mind. That's all. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Alameda.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, Counselor Isaacson already handled my first question regarding February first. Um, and Carson has actually put up a handout that I provided to staff on the screen here for discussion. As I tend to be very visual, so I needed to see the dates in front of me as opposed to just the written dates. On the screen you see in front of you, um, staff's proposed schedule, the green being the committee of the whole, the red squares being the suggested council meetings, and the yellow being what I see as already proposed, um, council-related conferences that we may or may not attend. The two thoughts I wanted to propose to council for, um, revisions or edits to the existing schedule, I'll focus on October right now. Um, the, the meetings currently that are scheduled on staff's report in October are both occurring after a long weekend Monday. The October first and third meetings would happen the day after, or the week of the truth and reconciliation day, and the fifteenth and seventeenth would happen the week of Thanksgiving. And, uh, partly I feel having reports to read on long weekends is one thing for staff, for, um, council to worry about, and then for staff to come in on a Tuesday after a long weekend and be thrown into a, a meeting. I think there'd be more opportunity, or just it might be more breathing room, we'll say, if we push those October meetings to the purple dates that I suggested the following week. As there's five weeks in October, there leaves some flexibility to make that work, and doesn't cram everything in. We, we may need a special council meeting at the end of September after U B C M, just to cover some extra stuff. But when I was looking at the calendar, I just felt that, um, that would give a little breathing room to council and staff to, um, to make things flow a little bit better. And I think in general, we probably shouldn't have meetings the, when the week is already short, to throw in two meetings in there as well, I think would be a good rule to follow in general. So that was my one suggestion.
You like to make a motion.
I will make a motion for the October meetings to be bumped. Is it ahead? No, back a week, um, to the eighth and tenth and twenty-second and twenty-fourth.
Second year for that?
Sure.
Counselor Isaacson. Discussion? Sir Soscon.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what the purple is.
You missed my whole ramble.
The, I think, uh, Counselor Alameda has said that he created this, uh, drawing to show you the alternative dates.
Thank you.
Purple's the alternate.
He's been working hard between sessions.
My brain was too busy. I should have had my ears in gear. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands up. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? That's carried unanimously. Counselor Alameda.
Thank you, Chair. I had one other suggestion that I did not demonstrate over here, uh, but if you look at June, um, June sixth, right now, we have a proposed council meeting scheduled. It happens to be the same week as the F C M conference, which this year is in Calgary. I was the only one that was able to attend F C M la, this past year, and Counselor Elliott was the only one to attend it two years ago. But as the event is in Calgary this year, it's a little bit more feasible for council to attend, that we might have more than one person that chooses to attend. So I wanted to potentially throw it out there to council that there might be an appetite to either have the June meetings also, both bumped up, uh, bumped back a week to the second and fourth week of June, or to move that first week of June meetings to the end of May, um, as May is also a five-week month.
Are you making a motion?
I will make that a motion.
You're a seconder. Is there a second year for the motion?
Uh, just clarity, he gave two options, and I'm not sure which one the motion is for.
That's, um, sure, I'll make a decision. I, I will say, let's move the, uh, week of June fourth and sixth meetings to the week of May twenty-eighth and thirtieth.
Do you repeat that?
To move the committee meeting from June fourth and the council meeting from June sixth to May twenty-eighth and May thirtieth, respectively.
Second year, Counselor Isaacson. Mr. Mayor.
I ask the, uh, C A O if, uh, they see any challenges from the staff perspective on this change.
Through, through the chair, um, appreciate the question. There may be a little bit of tightness with agenda prep. However, I think we can pivot. The main thing is that council has meetings that meet with your schedule. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor Palm.
Uh, yeah, I understand, uh, what Counselor Alameda is coming from, wanting to attend, uh, F C M, but, um, in light of our current, uh, budgeting conundrums, I'm gonna be advocating that we cut down and travel for council when we meet to discuss various components of moving forward and budgeting. So I don't know if this will, uh, affect those dates that you are mentioning, but I am strongly going to be speaking against, uh, the same travel funding for council on a go-forward basis in light of our current situation.
Any, anyone else? I'm, I'm just gonna chime in on that. I think F C M, you know, is a virtual option, and it's much less expensive than physical attendance, and it's quite possible, especially when it's in a closer time zone like Alberta, to actually attend and see all of the presentations and all of the workshop at F C M virtually. And when I compare the F C M convention and the U B C M convention, there, the, to my opinion, the F C M conventions are way less interactive. There's way less decision-making. There's fewer motions, uh, that hit the floor, uh, for the delegates to make decisions on. Much more of a workshop-based thing, and what I've found by attending virtually the last couple of F C M conventions, is you have actually more flexibility in viewing the workshops, because you can, you can go back and look at the history of the different workshops and view them at different times than they're necessarily available live. So I'm not gonna be in favor of this modification, because I think we're starting to move overlaps that might be inconvenient on one weekend to make them in inconvenient on a different weekend. That's my two bits. Any other discussions? All those in favor of the motion? Got two in favor. All those opposed? Motion is defeated. Anything else on the meeting schedule? Counselor Isaacson.
Uh, yeah, I will move to add council on February first, um, as mentioned before. It was an oversight, and just wanna make sure that that gets captured.
Counselor, Alameda's seconded. Any discussion?
Well, thank you, Chair. Just a question to, uh, staff on this one. Um, by adding February first, that would make three consecutive weeks of Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, I'm just wondering if the, I know we're gonna be deliberating a lot of budgetary things at that time. But that's also a lot of staff time for agendas and things as well. Um, I can see the value in adding February first, but I'm also wondering then if we need both meetings on the twenty-third and the twenty-fifth of January, if we're having a second council meeting on the, on the first being added over there.
Through the chair to Counsel Alameda, we do need those, because we need time for you to have your budget deliberations and not overpack meetings. Would that be fair to say? Thank you.
I think the twenty-third and the twenty-fifth of January are public information meetings for the budget. Am I right about that? They're scheduled at one thirty P M.
Through the chair, that is correct. They will be budget workshops, and the first will be on the operating level, and the second will be focused on the capital prioritization, uh, request that council directed to staff.
Counselor Isaacson.
Yeah, just to clarify, but they're, they're not public engagement sessions. These are meetings of committee of the whole or council to deliberate, but they are open meetings.
Through the chair, yes, that is correct.
So the motion is, what? Yale?
Through the chair, I just wanted to observe that should staff see with, um, any added meetings that we don't have enough agenda items, we can always propose to the mayor, uh, a review of canceling a meeting, as has been done, um, during your duration so far. Thank you.
Where are we right now? Kind of lost track of where we are. Motions and.
Very, February first motion.
Yeah. Scheduling a meeting on February first. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carry this. Counselor Alameda.
I believe we're at our final deliberations, so I will propose, is there that the two thousand twenty-four council committee of the whole and special meeting schedule, uh, as amended, be approved as recommended by the committee of the whole.
Second year for that? Counselor Isaacson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? That's carried unanimously. I think we're done with that. Moving on to five dot five, library service agreement.
Through the chair, I have Ms. Rebecca Burbank in the background, should we need. Thank you. This is fairly straightforward. This has come before you in the past. This is the library service agreement between the Powell River, um, library board and the Cathet Regional District, and it basically establishes a payment, um, schedule, uh, for how the library will be, uh, compensated for their portion of the Q R D's funds. Uh, I hope I've done a reasonable job of explaining it. You have the details in the report, and should you have any questions between myself and our CFO and Ms. Burbank, we can respond. Thank you.
Is this for a decision here, or something we have to refer to a council meeting?
Through the chair, it would be referred by the committee to council, so you can make a recommendation for council. Thank you.
Sensitivity?
Time sensitivity, um, it, it's needed to be done by the end of the year, so it is time sensitive. Thank you.
Oh, any discussion, any questions, counsel? Question to refer to counsel for.
That motion, refer, um, recommendation to counsel for decision December twenty-first?
Seconded by Counselor Alameda. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried unanimously. We now have a happy library person in the back row. Thanks for coming. Council remuneration bylaws. Anybody interested in that? Five point six. C A O.
Through the chair, before you have, um, in order for us to continue, uh, basically remunerating or paying council for twenty twenty-four, we do need direction from you, uh, with regarding the remuneration bylaw that ends at the end of this year. So staff have given you, um, a recommendation, we have, which proposes a two percent increase for mayor and council for twenty twenty-four, with directing staff to report back to the council by the end of twenty twenty-four with an independent analysis of recommendations for, um, payment, and then looking at consideration of possible retroactive payments. You also have some alternatives that are worded for you to consider at the end of the report as well. Um, and with that, I'll pause and let you ask us questions. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Counselor Palm.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, when I read this, I, I thought, um, council is in a leadership position here to set a tone going into this year light of where we are financially, when we don't have any of the answers that we need in front of us. And, uh, I cannot support a two percent increase to council, uh, at this point in time till perhaps the new year and when budget discussion. And, uh, at this point in time, I would even rule in favor of a five percent reduction for council. And to have that followed up with another discussion in August, whether we may need further cuts. Because we cannot afford it as to where we are. And we're all paid. We've all signed up for this duty. Sure, we spend a few hours in this chamber, but our pay is quite adequate for what we do. And I'm happy to pay for the remuneration I'm already, uh, receiving, and I don't need any additions. Um, so when we're going into negotiating years with FIRE and Q P, I think we have to set the tone, and I would say, hold the fort right now, zero percent increase, and, uh, to be looked at in the new year. Thanks, Chair.
Does anybody have any questions for staff before we go into asking for a motion? Counselor Isaacson.
Yeah, one question. Um, I know that other communities, uh, where council has been added to the, um, the benefits package, um, there's a number of, often people leave a, a full-time benefited job to take this role and, and no longer have benefits. And so I'm wondering if that is, I, I don't see it mentioned here, but ha, curious where that conversation is at.
Uh, through the chair, I don't have all the answers. Mr. Jackson's currently on vacation, and I know that, uh, he, this is one of his, um, pieces for council, and I would anticipate that we would be wrapping that into independent evaluation of how that looks across the board. But what I can confirm is that it is feasible for us to do that with our benefit provider. Thank you.
Any other questions, anybody else?
Question is to staff, in preparing this report, did you look at?
the fifteen highest tax rate communities in the province? And know what they are doing in terms of council and mayor remuneration. Secondly, there was major news stories last year that there were smaller northern B C communities had to make drastic budget cuts for it to have a reasonable budget. Fortunately, I can't remember those names, but wondering if you had happened to look at those putting together your report.
Through the chair, I don't believe the report before you had any of that research done that, but I can confirm with Mr. Jackson. However, I would say as part of our directive to an independent analysis, we will be looking at that and then looking at giving you comparables with cities that are geographically similar, um, different demographics, um, similar demographics and other factors. So there are, um, it's, it's a tricky one because it's like comparing apples and oranges, but giving you a sense of what that looks like. And then having somebody who are not your employees independently saying this is a, a best practice and you might want to establish a ratio for what percentage you are between an upper and lower limit. So I think that for us getting you back something that's done with a bit more rigor so that, and it's done independently puts less of an awkward position for yourselves and ourselves in that conversation. Thank you.
Good. One more.
The two percent suggestion. What's the basis of that?
Uh, through the chair, as this report was done by Mr. Jackson, who's in charge of human resources, I'll, I'll speak on his behalf. When we were, he asked me the question, what sort of recommendations should be put forward? I mentioned that, um, the budget in absence of direction applies a two percent increase to expenses. And that's based on the long-term target for inflation. And so in the absence of direction, that's what we've applied in our five-year financial plan as our best guess for increasing costs. Because we evaluate our budget every year, we have a chance after a year, looking at historical increases to understand where the expenses should be. So it is, it's a long-term guess, but that, that's what we use, uh, to stabilize our, our forecast for the five-year financial plan. So that is what is in the current budget. That is what the is budgeted for two thousand twenty-four currently, which is why I believe he put it as the recommendation.
Well, also through the chair, the bylaw that's expiring at the end of this month does set an annual increase of two percent for the mayor. So that was another factor.
But you got any motions they'd like to make? Counselor Palm?
Uh, make the alternative motion and but I will move that an alternative option could be applied, a, could apply a zero increase for two thousand twenty-four in the absence independent assessment. Final amounts established after the review are greater than those applied now could be reconsideration of two thousand twenty-four. That was one of the options, correct? It's below that. There more?
Just hang on. Counselor Palm was asking staff a question. Okay, not, not counselors. He's asking the C A O.
Oh, so I just want to be clear, Chair. The reason I've stopped there is because I, I am also opposed to a professional independent individual at a cost doing a review when council should be able to make this decision on their own. Want to spare the city taxpayers that expense.
Yeah. Motion you read? Maybe I could get the corporate officer, deputy corporate officer to read back his motion. So everybody knows what will be on the table if we get a second here.
Thank you, Chair. Um, if I'm correct, uh, Counsel Palm read the alternative option, which, um, is that council continue with an annual remuneration and reimbursement of expenses into two thousand twenty-four, uh, with a zero percent increase. Um, and so no adjustments to the two thousand twenty-three rates and then have report back to council by the end of August of two thousand twenty-four with recommendations, um, but not through an independent professional.
Is that your motion?
Just wanted to repeat the last sentence one more time.
That you, uh, the staff are directed to report back to council by the end of August, two thousand twenty-four with recommendations for mayor and council remuneration and reimbursement, um, but not through an independent professional.
That's correct. And, and I will say, and since speaking that, August is a good time when we have all the facts in our financial, uh, go-forward, uh, welfare. Thank you.
We have a second here for the motion. It looks like Mayor Wazno is seconding the motion. Any discussion? I think you've made your case, Director Palm. Counselor Isaacson?
Yeah, um, I, I would support this for two thousand twenty-four. Um, I think our, you know, we came in, especially the new people on council came forward onto council, knowing what the remuneration is. I think though, I, I do get concerned about cuts, not so much. I mean, it could be for us. I can't speak for the financial situations for everybody else. I think it's easy to talk about low rates of pay for council when you're, when you have a pension or you are retired and have a independent wealth. And in order to attract quality candidates that represent a diversity of people in our community, it is so important that we pay people on council a salary that attracts good diverse candidates. You know, we are a council of four retired men and I'm so grateful for the diversity of opinions that you have. But we are missing some important voices in this community when, um, we limit who, who can do this job financially. I am able to do this job financially because I have a, I'm self-employed and I'm able to adjust my schedule a little bit to make it work. But it's not always easy and, um, and so I, uh, am uh, the second part of the motion, not having an independent professional. I think if we can have some comparables from a couple of other communities to get a sense of what, where things are at around the province, I, I would be okay with that and not requiring, um, uh, not requiring uh, someone independent because I would guess the amount of money that they would charge would add up to what the increase might be in the next year. Um, I really, really appreciate what the previous council did and that they voted for some incremental increases and that actually had quite a big jump, I believe, in the last year. And that allowed people like Earl and I, or Counselor Almeida and I to think it feasible for us to be on council. Um, I don't know if I would have run if it was the amount of money that the previous, um, council made at the starting of their term. So I, uh, I, I am okay with smaller increases in the short term and, and the specific to this motion, zero percent in two thousand twenty-four. But I might be supportive of a big bump in the last year to make sure that we're recruiting, uh, a diversity of candidates who represent people who, uh, don't have uh, independent financial means to be able to do this job. Thank you.
Counselor Almeida?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm, I'm okay with going forward with this right now. Um, much, uh, much in line with what Counselor Isaacson shared, uh, but I also would agree with a lot of her points about, um, creating diversity. When I ran a year ago, I didn't know, um, how I would make this work as a uh, as a sole income earner for a family of five and, uh, but one of the reasons why I ran was because I did not see the, the diversity on, on council that Counselor Isaacson was talking about. So I thankfully have been, been able to make it work and find a, a, a day job and multiple jobs to, uh, to allow for it. So, um, I'm okay with, you know, a lot of what Counselor, Counselor Palm said. I do have a one question to staff, I guess. Uh, the thought that came to mind as we talked about the, um, uh, what's it called? A consultant report or whatever on, uh, comparables, uh, would be instead of one community paying for such a report, I imagine there are five to ten communities that could benefit from such a report since we're going to do comparables. Would there be a a conversation to be had to reach out to ten such communities and say, hey, let's go have these and, uh, share the cost of such consultant?
Through the chair to Counsel Almeida. I've actually put in a request for information to see if we may be get, getting a report that others have done. Uh, the challenge will be establishing whether we're being compared to municipalities that are quite different. So we're looking to see what free information is already available and then evaluating. But yes, that's, that's a good option as long as those cities or municipalities would see us as reasonable comparables.
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel Palm, you're a second time speaker.
Just to add further.
And I'll, and I'll get the, uh, after, after I get a chance to speak for the first time. As I said, you're a second time speaker. So I'm one of these, uh, I guess privileged retired people who is lucky enough to have a pension and I don't have a paying job outside of council. And, uh, that makes it less of a decision for me about running for council. I made it clear when I was running. I wasn't running because of the money. I was running because I wanted to make a contribution to the community. Still able to do that. You know, even with all my identities, I still think I can make a contribution to the community. And, uh, but I do believe there are other people in the community other than myself. And I would like to encourage people who work for a living. Maybe you work in the service industry. Maybe you work at, uh, other jobs that don't give them in this, uh, community we live in, the living wage that, uh, we're told you need to make to survive with a family. And I think we need to think about that when we're making these approvals. I think, uh, reasonable wage increases for counselors can probably be negotiated on a regular basis or put into a regular policy that relates to inflation and saves the money of a consultant every year who will get paid a lot more than the people on council or the people who intend to be on council. So that's one of the considerations that I have. First off, you don't have to cons- hire a consultant every year to tell you what the appropriate thing is. You can look at the inflation rate or across the country and get an estimate of what it's going to cost to survive as a human being in our society and save the money on the consultant. I was, the C A O was at a meeting with me the other night and I'll report on that. And we were talking about wages for city employees like the C A O and the fire chief and others. And she pointed out that this is a top, this is a competitive world. And you have to pay the going rate. If you pay under the going rate, if you don't, uh, follow your increases according to inflation and provide that remuneration, you are going to lose opportunities to have people doing the job. I think two percent is small. I'm, I'm quite happy to take a zero percent wage increase. Not going to bother me. Uh, but a two percent wage increase, I think, would be a valuable sign that we want people to consider participating. It will consider at election time, but if we get behind, we're going to have to hire another consultant and ask, ask the new consultant what kind of wages we have to offer to encourage people to run for office. And I'm talking about young people, women, all kinds of diverse individuals. So I think a zero percent increase is actually a mistake. And I think we're better off to provide an increase commensurate with inflation and, uh, deal with that. Because people deserve, I've always said, a workman deserves his pay or a worker deserves their pay. If you're doing a job, should be getting a right remuneration. And, uh, why not have that in remuneration? Follow the increases in inflation because that's the value of your pay. You get a zero percent pay increase, you're being told that your work is less valuable this year than it was the year before. I would, I would have been happy with the two percent increase and, uh, not bothering with the consultant. That's my two cents for Counselor Palm. It's your turn again.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it. Um, yeah, I, I, uh, just want to say, reiterate again that leadership goes a long way. And you are all in those leadership positions right now to demonstrate fiscal responsibility in the city of Powell River. So that's why I presented the motion and, you know, when you look back in hindsight, I started this job fifteen years ago, it was fifteen thousand dollars in remuneration a year. It's doubled now, that now, and I'm very cool for that at the cost of living. But that's a fifty percent increase over fifty. Quite adequate. And for Council, uh, Counselor Almeida's concern about comparables. I think Counselor Southcott was here the last time we had a review on, uh, increases for council. And we were well, uh, compensated with that increase just a couple of years ago, two, three years ago. So we could bring that report forward, which had all the other jurisdictions around us for comparables. And you'll see that Powell River is doing well. So that's why I'm saying time and these exceptional times that we're living in financially holds the line. Thanks, Chair.
Anyone else? Counselor Isaacson?
Yeah, just, um, one kind of reaction. Counselor Dought made some great points. Um, I know the motion on the floor is not to look at inflation as the rationale for raising rates. Um, I feel like often in times of inflation, there are so many financial pressures, it makes sense almost do the opposite of inflations when times are, um, the expenses, the increase in expenses isn't as high, um, to use those times to kind of level out the tax um, bump for folks. Um, in, in, in Counselor Dought's reference to two percent increase, uh, I, I think about like the the, the trends and how they might impact, uh, tax rates over years. And so anytime there's a big bump, it feels like a whoa, when in reality, if there had been an incremental increase over time, um, we'd get the same results, but with, um, more consistency to the taxpayer. So I'm, I'm kind of going back and forth in my mind here of, uh, like, I mean, I, I support the motion on the table, but I also support the original recommendation. So I'm, yeah, anyways, I'm going back and forth in my mind here where I want to go, but I think so far I concur with it seems to be the, almost the majority on not not needing an independent assessment for this.
Anyone else? They have a motion on the floor. Time to make up our minds. All those in favor of the motion?
Counsel, right? This is going to counsel.
It would be a referral to council, yes. All those in favor of the motion? Try again. Oh, I was listening to you, so I wasn't looking around the table. You have a motion on the floor made by Counselor Palm to refer to council either this Thursday or the first meeting in January. I would suggest maybe the first meeting in January might be the better day. Because we have had it, we've got an agenda for Thursday already. We have a significant number of additional items tonight.
We have a motion on the floor, Chair.
We, we do, and the motion has two options in the package, an option to do it on Thursday or an option to do it the first meeting in January. I want to clarify that.
Through the chair, I just confirmed with our CFO, we do need direction on this prior to the end of the year so that we can ensure that we keep your steady, rate of, you know, remuneration. Thank you.
Oh, the motion to refers to council. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried unanimously. There you go. Community engagement reports by counselors. Counselor Palm, you go ahead.
Yeah, Chair, I have nothing to report today.
Counselor Southcott?
Briefly, um, attended a couple of rate pairs meetings.
Sorry, Chair.
Go ahead. You can go next, okay? Because you already started.
Sound site rate pairs association, Wildwood rate pairs, um, as well. And, uh, Wildwood rate pairs had the fire chief and deputy chief and our C A O there. And I was very appreciative of the discussion that went on. I think that the, that crusty old crowd up there. I think that the that crusty old crowd up there were look quite satisfied with what they received from. From the chief, deputy chief and our C A O. And and then there was usually that group has a little celebration, so there was some snacks and. Et cetera, and it's a lovely neighborhood. I also attended the Cathet Regional Emergency Planning Committee. It was a presentation by a consultant. There's a kind of a major paradigm change going on with the wildfire preparation. In the past, it's been. The wildfire. Prevention plan, it's transferring moreover to a wildfire preparation plan. One of the consultants in the preparation, in the presentation made the statement. And this is, I wrote it down because it was quotable. The forests are going to burn. It's a matter of getting the word out to people. Which really represents a change, I feel, but it's consistent with. With what is being understood now as far as wildfire goes. I also. Participated in a meeting that the mayor will speak to in the next agenda item. And there was a presentation at the library of a night and a book launch of a ninety-two-year-old author. A real wonderful glimpse of history of the town site through the thirties and forties. When she was going to school and she was a young woman and she presented really beautifully. And their meeting room was full from the front to the back. It was a really lovely. Presentation, some great things going on at our library. And that I've been to a couple of terrific presentations in that room recently, and that's my report. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, Chair, one thing came to mind that I've been fielding a lot of calls on lately, and that is our situation. And, you know, I'm hearing all kinds of distress and people can't sleep at night and. And people aren't renewing and people are trying to sell their boats and, you know, in light of council's decision. I really have a feeling that this is having a very negative impact on our residents and their boding pleasure. Because in just doing the research for my seventeen-and-a-half-foot little runabout. It happens to be a little older but completely rebuilt. My insurance, without having to do a survey through the right underwriter. Is still six hundred and fifty dollars on top of the fifteen thousand or, yeah, fifteen hundred merge fee. That's not considering gas and all the other expenses with storage and and yearly upkeep that's associated. They're looking at four thousand dollars. We're driving people out of our harbor and out of our water. So, you know, you can take the hard line. But it's having a lot of adverse effect on senior citizens that have boats that they can't get a survey on. And and not sleep at night. Just want council to be aware of the decision they've made. Calls I'm feeling fielding and the adverse effect it's having. Because soon that harbor will not be housing residents of Powell River, but will be filled by residents from Vancouver. That's very, very disturbing. Thank you, Chair.
I'm going to go to councillor Alameda next and come back through the mayor to myself, if that works for everybody.
Thank you, Chair. I don't actually have anything to report. I spent two weekends ago at home recovering from a little flu bug. And there wasn't much on the schedule with all the other Christmas activities going on. So I think I missed more things than I could possibly report on, so nothing for this week.
Thank you. I am council's designated member of the B C Social Procurement Initiative, which is about. Encouraging municipalities and supporting municipalities with including social impact into their procurement. So, for example, you know, hiring or contracting with people who employ people with disabilities. Or Indigenous-owned businesses, et cetera. And so the main topic of conversation was the long-term, the long-term plan for the project. And so there's a couple of conversations ongoing on which avenues to pursue, what funding looks like, what membership looks like. And so it's in a bit of a reflection point right now. I attended the Youth Can Volunteer Powell River Weekly Meeting. They have a meeting every Tuesday. This is a group of young people who often are involved in community volunteerism. They set up for seniors breakfasts and lunches at the Cranberry Centre. They are doing a date at the S P C A soon. They're often at the heart of some of the events that need a few extra bodies to support with. And and so I was there to talk, just to meet them. I talked a little bit about how council works, what sort of decisions we're dealing with, and so talked about the budget a little bit. Was trying to get their input on youth council and and what sort of things they might be looking for to engage with council. And have their views heard by council. And, yeah, as soon as I shared a little bit about what council does, like the floodgates opened, there were so many questions. It was such an engaged group. It was a joy to be there. And and it wasn't enough time, so I look forward to connecting with them again in the future. They they do great work. Right after that, I went to the Townsite Rape Peers Association meeting. I was there on the agenda to talk about peer assisted care teams. Council has made, adopted a motion in support of that previously. And so I was there to request their support and subsequently they have sent a letter to C M H A. C M H A indicating their support as an association. And since I was there, they also took the opportunity to ask me questions about just how life is as a councillor, and so it was nice to interact with them. On the topic of pact, just wanted to note that Flamin Nation also has submitted a letter of support for pact to the minister and to C M H A. So there's increased interest for some regional collaboration on potential of a peer assisted care team in our community. Also attended a meeting that the mayor will speak to next up on the agenda. I also was invited recently to join the Economy Working Group. For the Disaster and Climate Risk and Resilience Adaptation Project. This is an initiative of the provincial government, the Ministry of Climate. I forget the name of the ministry now. And we'll be meeting over five times to. To discuss recommendations and a framework to the province to do a provincial-wide assessments of disaster and climate risk and resilience. Adaptation required by us as a society, and my working group is specifically looking at the economy. So there will be a provincial report, it's looking like sometime summer twenty twenty-four. And then after which they'll be doing regional assessments and recommendations leading towards twenty twenty-six. So the makeup of the working group, there's about twenty-five of us that were invited. It's a mix of like think tanks and academics. I would say, you know, maybe forty percent think tank academics, forty percent senior staff from the provincial government across ministries. There was agriculture. Climate change. A number of ministries are presented and then a number of industry-type groups. So there was a commercial properties group there and then a few elected folks. So myself, someone from North Vancouver, someone from Kamloops and the mayor of Princeton, we're all invited to be on this. So I look forward to contributing. And if if folks in the economy here and our our committee is working on a definition of what do we mean by economy? What do we mean by resilient in our economy? What are the assets and conditions required to create that resilience? Happy to hear input and and contribute to my work on that committee over the next few months. And that's it. Thank you.
Mayor, would you like to go first or after me?
Your choice, Chair.
Oh, you go ahead then.
All right. I'm going to be short. After questing for eight months. And having the first two meetings not able to attend by the Chair of Lift. I did meet with the new Chair of Lift, which will be. Well-recognized around the table as it is Maggie Hathaway. Many of you'll know that Maggie worked with Nicholas Simon as an E A for many years. And she's been involved in a number of volunteer organizations. So I was quite pleased to see that she was willing to step up. And Chair Lift at a time when they appear to have a number of issues that are important to the community. So we agreed that we should meet on a regular basis. And wherever possible to have staff facilitate. Opportunities for how we can work together to ensure that the services that Lift would like to provide. To our community are provided with minimal impact on the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, it was a busy week, looking through my list. On the eleventh, I attended with Vancouver Coastal Health and the chairs of two other regional hospital districts. I don't usually respect, report on regional hospital district stuff, but this was a significant meeting in my view. So we had Vancouver Coastal Health and all of their budgeting people there. And we met at the Seashell Hospital. The the Chair of the Seated Sky Regional District was there and the chairperson of the. Sunshine Coast Regional Hospital District was there and myself for the Cathet Regional Hospital District. And we talked about the whole Vancouver Coastal Health funding cycle, funding process that they go through. How they, how they begin their funding process, how they move through it with the provincial government finally making a decision on how much. They have to provide, talked to us about Vancouver Coastal Health's requests for. About sixty-five million dollars worth of funding from the province. The provincial regional hospital districts and the health authorities looking for. Thing over three hundred million from the province and the available fifty-five million that they have to try to divide that up. Some of that comes to Powell River and the Cathet Regional Hospital. And the regional hospital district has has a cost-share agreement with Vancouver Coastal Health. So if improvements happen, the Cathet Regional District Regional Hospital that goes through. The hospital district and that it ends up being taxable. And everybody will see that on their tax incentives. So we had a discussion about how to smooth out the impact on regional hospital districts, how to give advance. Preparation to regional hospital districts for them. It was actually a very positive discussion with Vancouver Coastal Health, something that some of us have been trying to put in place. For three or four years. It was finally happening this year and was a great communications effort. Had a nice ferry ride, went down and saw the whales at Saltry Bay. Spent a lot of time waiting for ferries and came back, but it was, I think, a useful day. And I'm reporting on it so people will understand what the processes are to go through all of those things. I went to the Townsite Rape Peers Society, Townsite Rape Peers Association meeting on Tuesday night. And that was, that was interesting. Councillor Elliott was there. She was there as a delegation and it turned out to be a twenty, twenty questions for councillor Isaacson. And it's interesting, I watched the interview process go on. Learned something about councillor Isaacson. But they talked about more than that at the meeting. They also were very interested in the upcoming official community plan process. Looking for ways that they can participate as an association, just as part of the community. But they're saying they had, they had hopes that they could maybe host a meeting or work with the planning staff to. Find a series of meetings so everybody could get their two cents worth in on the official community plan process. And councillor Southcott was there too. It was a nice meeting and hopefully we'll have many more of them. On the Thursday, there was an interesting meeting up at the top of Nutka Street, the top of Westview Avenue. Where there is a developer, was trying to develop a modular home community up there. And to larger density than is allowed by the regional district bylaws. And that is in the regional district, if you drive up to the top of Westview. Take a little diversion down Manson and go up Nutka Street, you can see that community coming together and it's a strata. Little setup with modular homes in it, not mobile homes, but modular homes. And they would like to expand. They had an open house, which I went to because there's impact on the city. There's a group at one time, they'd come to the city and wanted to explore being annexed into the city. And whether they're annexed or not, they certainly have ideas about about traffic up and down Westview. They have, yeah, ideas about sewage and water that will develop, I think, over the years. If they decide to get somewhere with the regional districts. So an interesting process, they had their amenity room fall up there. I saw councillor Alameda at the meeting too and all the usual suspects from the regional district were there. But I thought it was interesting because there's certainly been some interactions in the city. If not, if not a larger discussion, it will be at least servicing discussions of some kind with the city. Appropriate time, but there are hoops to jump through in the regional district before you get. Thursday night was also, went home for a quick supper and zipped across the street to. The Wildwood, Wildwood Rape Peers Association meeting. And it was a good meeting. It was their Christmas party, which meant charcuterie and discussion afterwards. But it was really good to see the C A O there and the fire chief and the fire chief's assistant there. And councillor Southcott and I were there to provide three different perspectives. On the possibility of the closure of the Wildwood Fire Hall and what that will mean to people. At our significant interest, I think everybody that was in the room was happy to have the discussion. And happy to have all the information that they had. And to me, it was interesting, the slightly different perspective that the fire chief and the C A O and myself, probably. Councillor Southcott have on the idea. Also wanted to talk about, you know, pay for city people, people on city council and pay for city staff. How we, how we work all those things out. And they also, you know, looking at the property between the Salish Sea and Highway one oh one. That's in the hands of a developer and the nineteen-acre wood between Chilco and King Avenue. That are up for development. There is quite a few people interested in development and rezoning. And we talked about the official community plan and how that adjustment is going to happen. And how the provincial government laws that are coming in or all the regulations that then. Under the new bills, I think forty-four, forty-five and forty-six. How those regulations are going to work out over the time. It was an interesting meeting. It went for a little while. Some nice people there, and I think most of the people there were happier and more informed at the end of the meeting than they were at the beginning. Which I thought was a very positive thing. Not always that way. On on Friday, I wasn't going to mention this, but I will, I'm a member of the yacht club, Powell River Yacht Club. And I went to the Christmas party for the Powell River Yacht Club. And there was a lot of discussion about harbor rates and insurance and the committee. And they're basically, most people that I talked to were satisfied with the decision that council has come to. I got positive information on that. And there was a certain excitement among people about the deadline for applying to be part of the Harbor Users Committee. That's my two bits worth of discussion there. I actually had the day off, I think, last Wednesday. So we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is. Finished business, I don't think we have any new business. Flamin and city relationships. Mayor Wasno.
Thank you, Chair. The last Friday, councillor Southcott, councillor Isaacson and I. Had an opportunity to meet with Mayor, with. Agus John Hackett and his colleagues. This meeting I had requested about five months ago. Seemed to be a lot of information that our council weren't aware of. And similarly, there was a lot of information. That the. Agus Hackett and and his group were thinking about, but they weren't sure. And so when we sat down and met, the the objective was to find a way. That we could move forward with our accord. I think everybody recognized is a model within B.C. in terms of a city and First Nations coming together with an accord. And so what we said was basically some important things are economic development, accommodation and arts, recreation and culture. So in the accord, there are opportunities for working groups to be put together. And so what we agreed is that we would start looking to our CAOs, a simple mechanism that we could start with two or three of those working groups. And thanks to our CAO, when we went out, we took a little tree. And what I said to our guests was that as this tree grows, we hope that we're going to have opportunities to grow together in many different ways. In response, we were presented with a very nice ornament, which was handmade the First Nations. They presented this to us. So I hope that this will go up in an appropriate place for the holiday season. Thank you.
The next item on the list is a temporary use permit. Zero zero five, LIFT Community Resource Centre, Councillor Palm.
Yes, Chair, thank you. I brought this forward after thinking about our previous discussions on our permit for the overnight shelter and and I want to just start by thanking the Westview Ratepayers and Ash Varma for sending us their concerns regarding security at the site, overnight security. And unfortunately, we we passed on that and there won't be any. And since then, we've heard concerns about safety in the neighborhood and residents across the street in their new accommodation thing feeling unsafe. And those are a lot of seniors. So I think Mr. Varma would appreciate a report from staff spelling out the conditions of our temporary use permit and what conditions are not being met, what conditions are being met. And they can use that report as a starting ground for what we passed previously with Mr. Varma in the room was proposing a meeting between him and LIFT and other agencies to arrive at some hopefully safe go-forward compromise. So this is just to help citizens in that area, neighbors who get the true facts on where we're at in terms of our permit, its conditions, and whether they're being met or not. I think it would be healthy information for all concerned.
Okay, you're making that in the form of a motion?
Do you want me to make the motion?
If you want to have a motion, that's the thing to do.
Yes, I would like to direct staff to provide a report regarding how well the conditions of the temporary use permit zero zero five for the LIFT Community Resource Centre are being met.
Second here for them. Your mayor.
I've spoke to it. Chair, and those are the reasons why I brought it forward.
Counselor Isaacson.
Yeah, just a question for staff. I'm wondering through the chair and CRO. You know, given the existing communications and relationship, what like the level of work that would need to be required to do this? Is this like a big job, a small job? What sort of staff resources would you be looking at to put this together?
Through the chair, Councillor Isaacson, I'm going to lean a little bit on Director Gao because it will be he and his team that have to put this together. I think anytime we're tasked with doing a report, it certainly takes away from other tasks in terms of the amount of time. Mr. Gao, are you able to speak a little bit to what we know so far and how much it would take to do that?
Through the chair. You know, I think that there is a report that can be prepared. I must admit, I'm a little apprehensive about bringing it forward and what it actually achieves. That is probably my bigger concern. And do we just open up a problem that continues to be a problem? So you know, having reviewed this file for the last couple of months, there are areas where staff can continue to work with the operator to achieve the best outcome from all parties. If staff are instead directed to write a report, that is going to take away even from that aspect of improving that relationship. Again, I have reviewed that temporary use permit a number of times over the last couple of months. And I think I would spend a lot of time writing a report explaining why a lot of the actions that people are concerned about, including Dr. Varma, actually fall outside of those conditions in the permit. For example, the use is happening with inside of the space. You know, it is twenty beds intended for sleeping. That is the permitted use. It's an overnight sleeping accommodation. I think there's a lot of controversy and a lot of different opinions on what is actually happening there. And I'm not convinced that a report from staff is going to solve any of that. But that's my opinion. Is it?
Counselor Southcott.
Thanks, Chair. Item two point one on our agenda tonight, minutes of the regular committee of the whole meeting held December fifth contains the following. After three point one delegation from Dr. Ash Varma, the emotion was made, it was moved that I'll just cut to the amended motion. What was finally carried was that staff be directed to work with Dr. Varma and LIFT to find solutions to the issues detailed by Dr. Varma. And I know the motion on the floor at the moment right now is slightly different than that, but I'm wondering if there's enough redundancy that that existing direction to staff doesn't satisfy the intent of your motion, Councillor Palm. And once this work between our staff, Dr. Varma and LIFT occurs, which they've been, this our direction that I'm sure we can expect something back from staff and it may be premature to or I'm just thinking that the two, your motion actually is satisfied by this and we could probably get less formal report backed from staff on the progress of that subsequent to that work. Thank you.
Anyone else? Your hand, Counselor. Haven't spoken yet. And I think the I think the re motion that Councillor Southcott was talking to earlier actually satisfies the complaints that we've been hearing from people about looking at solving problems that people in the community view as being caused by LIFT's facilities in the area. Think that's a more appropriate one and a more positive resolution than the one Counselor Palm has put forward. My share planning officers' point of view that this could be just an opportunity to create more more controversy, more contribution, more controversy and more anger in the community about this issue that's still upfront. Like to go ahead and see if we can get the two things to work together in a reasonably positive way. And I note that we're going to be talking about a different temporary use permit two days. And who knows how that's going to turn out. But I'd actually like to go with our previous decisions on this and try to get work together as opposed to trying to find more opportunities for confrontation. Mayor Wasno.
I have a thought.
You did. And you were a second time speaker, sir. I've got a list in the first time and a list the second time.
Keep it short. I like what Councillor Southcott brought forward. And I think the fact that there is a process which will have both parties at the table will in the long run move us closer to a resolution that everybody would like. So I think, Councillor Palm, that that resolution that's already in place is a good one. Thank you.
Counselor Palm.
Thank you. Mayor Wasno, that's exactly what I was going to say as part of my delivery right now in terms of being proactive. When two parties get together, they need a place to start. And if they're going to come up with solutions, they have to know the existing parameters they're working from and what conditions are being met and what conditions are not being met, which will help them in their deliberations to hopefully make the situation better. So this is a proactive recommendation to help a citizen that's going to be meeting with those organizations that doesn't know the lay of the land at the moment. He doesn't know what he's dealing with other than the problems that keep presenting himself in his practice. So I'm only trying to advocate for the citizens' concerns by having staff provide some kind of playing field where those helpful and hopefully complicated decisions and recommendations can be come forward to make the situation far greater than it is presently. That's my intent with this motion. Thank you.
Counselor Isaacson.
Thank you, Chair. I think I'm also agreeing with the the motion that was on the table previously about working together because I think what is most important here is to look at what are the impacts to the current, who's being impacted and how? And what are potential solutions to those? I think some of the ways that Dr. Varma is being impacted go beyond the temporary use permit conditions. And so by leaving it up to staff to help facilitate conversations allows for a broader view on the issue. I think the temporary use permit could be a part of that conversation and I would expect it would play into it. But ultimately, we're looking at who is being impacted and how. And that includes people experiencing homelessness and people who live and work and own businesses in the area. And what could work, you know, what could moving forward look like? So I think that the previous motion passed at a previous meeting is sufficient for my purposes. I do understand that the interests for people to know what's going on. But I am more interested in in solutions rather than people knowing for knowing sake. We have a limited staff resources and I'm more interested in solutions. Thank you.
Counselor Alameda.
Thank you, Chair. I can see where Councillor Palm's coming from with this motion and I'd like to but I would compare with Councillor Southcott that we already have a council-directed action on the table for staff to deal with. And I think if we put LIFT and Dr. Varma and a staff member in the same room, we have the existing TUP there. They can go one by one through the few recommendations that were listed on that TUP and discuss what's been working and what hasn't been working. And Dr. Varma himself admitted that over the last few weeks, things have improved and the time it would take staff to put together a report, I think they can have several meetings between the three parties and get a lot further ahead than a report would ever bring. So I won't be in favor of this motion.
Wasno.
Thank you. I understood what Seth said. Bringing Dr. Varma and other concerned citizens together with LIFT and staff, the obvious first start to that meeting would be for staff to say a permit requires these things. The date, these have been adequately met and these are the ones that are outstanding. But I think Councillor Palm's motion would be periodically addressed at that first meeting for staff. And felt the need for a formal report, which we all know is time consuming. And I think that this would be covered off in the process of that first meeting.
Any other hands?
I got one more point that I'd like to make, and that is word safety means a lot to me when it comes to the citizens of Powell River. And there's one other reason for asking for what conditions are being met and what conditions aren't. Because when it comes to safety and if things go fall off the rails, to a great degree, somebody gets hurt, somebody gets killed, who knows what could happen. But at that point, council has a document that said these conditions aren't being met. And if worst case scenario happened, council could then make the decision to revoke the permit. Right now, without knowing what conditions are being met and what aren't, we have no direction in that regard when it comes to the ultimate safety of our citizens. So that's one of the other additional reasons I'm asking for this to see. Thank you, Chair.
The mayor is a third time speaker.
Thank you, Chair. To the CAO, would it be normal practice that if staff observes something that could be a potential danger that they would immediately bring it to the attention of the CAO? Would either deal with it at the staff level or bring it to council either at a special meeting or a regular meeting?
Through the chair, that would be correct. I think Mr. Gao observed that some of the challenges Dr. Varma is having are things that fall outside the TUP and go into other realms. And I do think that I had actually a very nice meeting with I'm sure she won't mind me saying Julie Jenkins from LIFT yesterday. And I do think that the idea of sitting down together, it's actually a fairly common one that happens with B.C. housing supportive sites. So another type of forum but facilitated by us instead of the operator. I think would generate good conversations and solutions. And we might include other staff that you don't see with us here today, like bylaws, so that if there are things that fall outside the realm of the TUP that we can also address those. And we also have partnerships like with the RCMP and so forth. So sitting down does give us that opportunity. And that's one of the things we did discuss. Thank you.
So I don't see any more hands up. So on Councillor Palm's motion, all those in favor? See the hands again? Councillor Southcott, were you voting in favor? I saw your hands up.
Yep.
And Councillor Palm is in favor over here. Anyone in favor? Those opposed? Motion is defeated. So that brings us to the end of our agenda. I had guessed it would take us till about six thirty, so I'm feeling kind of because we're not too far over time. But you know, that's because of everyone, everybody around the table. We're at the exciting part that we call a question period. So, Mr. Galinsky, do you have any questions for us tonight? I'm really happy about that, too. That's good. In the audience, anyone have any questions? Up to the microphone, please, and tell us who you are.
Sorry to delay your six thirty end meeting. My name is Lisa Moffett and I live in Westview. I have a couple of questions about the Zanga program and then a comment about the last item that you spoke about. So what I heard tonight is that the Zanga program is really successful. It's maxed out ridership and it's won an award. It's also supported by the consultant report that's referenced in the staff report. I appreciate Councillor Southcott, Councillor Isaacson and Councillor Alameda's considerations for residents who are impacted and disproportionately impacted by a decision to cancel service, by a potential decision to cancel service. And even Mayor Wasno recognized that some people don't have other options. And I can only imagine how terrible that situation must be to be in. So my questions are of the of the um demographics that were shared, how many Zanga bus riders qualify for HandiDart? What percent of the population are represented in each of the age groups? What are their genders, their race and their income, or any single parents? And what is the cost to the city of B C Transit? And then are any grant, any other grants potentially available? I'm happy to repeat those.
Does staff have answers for any of those questions?
Um, through the chair. It's trying to quickly take them all down. We have, I think we can provide you something in writing and copy and also provide that to council. I do know with the demographics that we do have some data on ridership, but it it doesn't extend into uh it it looks at age, but it doesn't look at uh some of the other equity factors you're looking at in terms of diversity. So we do have that. And if you want my repeating your first question, because I thought I might have had an answer.
Oh yeah, I'm curious because there was a suggestion that people who ride Zanga could take HandiDart instead, but I'm curious, like, not everybody qualifies for HandiDart. So what are the percentage of Zanga bus riders who would qualify for HandiDart?
That's a good question, and I don't know that we have the answer to that, but I can check with Cam Reed Hour um through the chair through uh see what transportation, what data has been voluntarily given of that.
Okay, thanks.
And and with regard to the B C Transit piece, I believe there's some data in the report, but we can provide that financial data to you as well. Thank you.
Counselor Almeida, do you have an answer for those questions?
I don't have an answer. I just wanted to clarify, Ms. Moffett's one statement there because I was the one that made the reference to the Handy Dart and Zanga hybrid, uh which was completely just an outside the box thought. I wasn't suggesting that Zanga users um necessarily could be hybrid, uh could be Handy Dart users in terms of that qualification. I was just trying to think of, are there ways that we could um keep both services and and maybe save some money potentially i- if there was some downtime and stuff. So it was just more of a uh creative musing to see if there was ways that we could merge the services together into one, but I don't know the feasibility or the or the um how busy one is compared to the other to see if that's, to to know that's even a possibility.
Thanks. And I think it was, I think there's something in the report about like people could use Handy Dart. It wasn't necessarily in response to your comment there. And then um through the chair, just went on the last item about the letter from West U Rate Pairs and and talking about the cold weather shelter. I am a member of the West U. I'm a paid member of the West U Rate Pair Society, and I actually um wholeheartedly disagree with their letter. Um, the West U Rate Pairs decided to forego consultation about issues that their members um deem as important at their A G M meeting. And I would just encourage the council to think about the difference between somebody feeling unsafe and somebody feeling uncomfortable because they're quite different. And then this is a bit of a rhetorical question, but something for you to sit with. Um, whose safety are we prioritizing in these decisions around cold weather shelter? Because we're actually talking about people who might very likely die because of exposure if they don't have other options.
Thank you. Any other questions? Come on up.
My name is R. Richards. Um, I hadn't planned to speak at all today, but a couple of things have caught my mind, and one is Counselor Palm's talk about the marina. I'm one of those people who can't afford to put their boat back in the marina. I've had insurance on that boat since two thousand fifteen, so it's not the insurance money. It's the rates that are skyrocketing. I've sent letters to this council about why they should not be increasing. I'd never got a reply, never even heard it talked to, talked about in council. There's little things like the Powell River Flying Club. Somebody here said that the marina is more of a a private club. Well, if there's anything more private than the Powell River Flying Club, I don't know what it is, but yet they can even apply for um, what was it, tax breaks or something like that? Last, last um I don't think it was tax exemptions, but help with their taxes. So I'm gonna, I'm in, my question would be, what are you going to do when you find out that all the boats in that marina are from the Naimo? Or from Seashell or from Vancouver? And that very few of the people here in Powell River can afford to put their boats in there? Is anybody giving that any thought? Or does anybody care? Or is it just money? Is it just money? Is that all it is? You don't care what the people of Powell River want. You just want money.
Well, I'm gonna try to answer some of them. First off, the insurance requirement for people in the harbor is a safety requirement that is common, and we've, we've had a lot of discussion about the insurance requirement that has been voted on by council and supported again by council. And I've talked to lots of people who own boats in Powell River and intend to continue to own boats, to use the harbor. Think that. And there's a couple of your questions. As far as the harbor becoming empty and no users being available, my information is there are very long waiting lists to get into the North Harbor. And and when March comes along, there's usually a long waiting list or a long list of people who want to get into the South Harbor. So if anything, I think that Powell River in the future is going to have a room for at least another marina about the same size as the one that currently exists. Encourage tourism and to provide space for people in the community who want to have them. That's my answer for them. Counselor Isaacson has another.
Yeah, uh, just to add on to that, you you talked about rates, and I don't know if you meant the mortgage rates, and council did have a pretty robust discussion over a couple of meetings at the end of last year about rates and what uh this council deemed is reasonable and um and you know, a lot of it was about money and and the cost of maintaining the harbor. Um, I I take your point about the flying club. It was a permissive tax exemption because they're a community group. Uh, and I do think that needs to be looked at, and that's why I am excited by um more broadly about staff's upcoming work on reviewing um how council and how the city supports community groups, because right now we offer a blanket to all societies irregardless of uh their purpose and impact. And so um, I think you've raised an important point there and and I, I, it's well taken by me. Thank you.
Okay, um, Counselor Doubt, I was not referring to insurance. All I said was I have insurance. I've had it ever since two thousand fifteen. And the rates going up are what's killing me. I've pulled my boat last week, and it's not going back in because I can't afford it. I went through the the marina when I pulled my boat, and there are boats there that look like they're registered to Vancouver and the Naimo so far. And most boats don't say where they're registered from, but some do. So I would like to know if the city or the Wharfenger or anybody is going to keep track of how many boats are coming in from outside of Powell River and watch to see if we are being ripped off because our rates are are so much lower than Vancouver or anywhere else. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't have rate increases, but we had a situation, I believe, two years ago where we were asked to pay more money for our marina services to to keep our boats in there, and no one complained because we felt it was fair. And then the next year comes along and they say, we've got no money in the reserve. Well, where did that two hundred thousand or whatever? I forget the exact number, but it was something like a hundred, hundred, two hundred thousand dollars that was in that reserve. It just suddenly disappeared. Where did that go?
Mr. Mayor, you had your hand up.
I did. I I thought that you might want to comment on the committee that the council has agreed to put in place.
And the committee put in a harbor. The city has decided to put in a harbor users committee. It would be open to people who use the harbor, who have a boat tied up in the harbor, basically, and some staff members and a council member. And that is to give people consultation about general issues in the harbor, and they can talk about whatever they want to talk about. When when we changed the harbor rates, which would have been when things happened so fast, I think it was actually pardon me? A year ago in September, when we changed the harbor rates, we had, we had boaters filling the place up and talking about the harbor rates and doing a great deal of study on the fact that the idea is to collect enough money to pay for the pay off the debt that exists on the harbor from its construction, pay for the operation of the harbor and to pay for a certain amount of funds to go into the reserve. Now, to make the future maintenance and replacement of the harbor possible. Now, if you have specific financial questions about the harbor reserve, I don't have all of those memorized, but the C F O perhaps can help us.
Uh, yes, through the chair, I'd just like to confirm in general that the harbor reserve is only used for capital harbor costs. And that the um and the objective of the rate increases was to ensure intergenerational equity between harbor users today and harbor users in the future. So if the harbor users today don't save enough for the capital repairs, then in the future, the harbor users will have to pick up that full bill. So we did a, you know, very long term, complex financial model um projecting what the capital cost would be for the harbor. And then we worked backwards to try to annualize that future capital cost for the next, I think we were looking at fifty years. And so what we do is we set those rates to try to find that fair balance of everyone kicking in for the capital costs, even though they might not be in the harbor when those costs occur. And I I can very much confirm that every year, the uh profit from the North Harbor, the revenue that exceeds expenses goes into the North Harbor Reserve to start saving for those future capital costs. And so um back in June, all the way to December in twenty twenty-two, there were a number of reports that went over this. And I'm happy to meet with you to discuss it in more detail. As well, I'll say those reports did cover um the number of out of town boat owners, uh because we do have the addresses for everyone. I don't remember exactly, but I do recall it was just a handful of out of town boat owners. Um, and so that is a question that the Wharfenger could could confirm for me, but I do recall in those reports that I it wasn't something that um was of massive concern. Whether that's changed since twenty twenty-two, I can't confirm, but that information is publicly available if you'd like to dig into it.
Well, I'm not trying to make this into a debate. I just wanted to back up with with what Counselor Palm said. The deed is done already. It's not going to change. I know that. I just want you to be aware that some of us just don't have, we're we're on fixed incomes. We don't have the money to for a hundred, two hundred dollars a year increases in that that marina period. On another subject, I just have one question. Since this council amended, I'm sorry, this is according to uh um, which one was it? Uh, six two, or sorry, eight two. Eight two, the um, this, the shelter. Um, last meeting, this council removed the security um part of the permit. T U P zero one one, I believe it was. So my question is, uh, with no security down there, who's going to pay Dr. Varma the twenty-five hundred dollars for damages? I mean, he can't count, he can't claim it on insurance with a ten thousand dollar deductible. Uh, if it happens again, who's going to pay him? He's going to move out, period. He's going to move somewhere else or he's going to move to another town, and I wouldn't blame him for a minute. A simple little thing like security. If you knew the finances, I don't know if the city has checked into the finances for for Lift, but I have. And they've got more than enough money to pay for security. And yet we heard um Julie Jenkins, I believe her name is, say at the last meeting that if they had to provide security for the emergency shelter, they wouldn't open it. She was referring to the the uh extreme weather shelter. But it was also named in in the the P U C zero one one, which is actually P U, P U C, P U, T U P, sorry, T U P uh zero zero five. So the two were lumped together and they were Dr. Varma said that they were supposed to have security when they opened the emergency shelter two years ago. I looked at that that permit and I didn't see where it said that. But staff asked for security on this latest one. But also the emergency shelter was in there as well. So anyway, the point is it was removed. So who's going to be responsible for the damage to places when when it happens?
So temporary use permit zero one one will be up for debate among council on Thursday night. That's the cold weather shelter debate. Motion was made by Counselor Isaacson that it go forward without security. That was passed, but it needs to be revoted on or reexamined because of the notice that needed to be given in public so that everybody would know what the status of that application was. As for who will pay for something that's not covered by insurance, I can't answer that. Perhaps Stout can uh provide some information, but uh I'm sure we can answer that question.
I can't answer this fully, but if there were a situation where the city, there was a charge against the city for something that we did, we do have the option of looking at our municipal uh insurance agency. Not everything qualifies, but it's possible if there was something where there was a claim made against the city. Uh, Ms. Dunston and her team typically know more about this. I don't know if you've got any further to add.
Uh, through the chair, we we can assess it claim by claim. Um, generally, the claims we see are um damaged to third parties, so something the city has done to damage another property or a person, and we assess it claim by claim, but um we certainly encourage anyone who may have a claim to submit the claim for assessment.
Thank you. Okay, that's a good answer. So trying to get into a debate about answers to questions here. Counselor Isaacson, do you have an answer for the question?
Uh, I wanted to correct something um that was shared. Uh, just to clarify, the the security component is specific to T U P one one, so we aren't talking about security for the entire site. Um, the security requirement was specific to zero one one, which is the emergency weather shelter. So that's what's up for debate on Thursday, just to clarify that. We're we're not debating uh zero zero five on Thursday.
Oh, because that's where I was confused because they were named in that that uh motion at the last meeting. It was both of them, the uh emergency ser- uh center and the extreme weather center. They're both mentioned in there, and so I was wondering, you have two different permits. You still have a year left on the emergency shelter. But you were talking about both of them and you removed the uh the the city had put the uh security on both of them for that one permit. I'm pretty sure if you look back, you'll find that that permit last week said both of them. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anybody online? And I don't think we have anybody actually looking at our online, or do we? Oh, there you are over there. No questions online? If you are online, pipe up with a question because we know there are people watching. It's not much after six thirty. Pardon me, Counselor Southcott? Do I have a second here for the motion to adjourn? Yes, we do. We've got at least two, all those in favor of the motion to adjourn. That's carried. Thank you very much, everybody.